Good morning, and thank you for joining us this morning for our City Council Study Session. We'll go ahead and get started. Ruth, could you please call the role?
Yes, sir. Adamson?
Here.
Ray?
Here.
Gina?
Here.
Laura?
Here.
Cortega?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Black?
Here, thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Two, which is Pocatello Regional Airport Commission Update. Representatives from the Pocatello Regional Airport Commission will discuss the commission's goals and projects, as well as council's policies and expectations.
I guess you want us to sit.
I would sit. I wouldn't stand if I were you, but you can do what you'd like.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Michelle Paletti. I'm the Board Chair of the Airport Advisory Board. I would just like to give a thanks to the council members and the mayor for your service and your support, and a special thanks to Councilman Cheatham. He is very supportive and provides guidance and stuff, and attends our meetings very regularly. I would also like to give a very special thanks to Alan and Christie. Their dedication and their services to the airport is very commendable. And I'll turn the time over for Alan.
Thank you. And I'd also like to thank our, Michelle especially, and our board members who do such a good job for us at the airport in giving us input and sharing of their talents. I'd like to share a couple of things with you today. I'd like to start out with some statistics. Pocatello Airport at the present time is maintaining load factors in our service, near 80 percent, and that's a good number to be at. Not so many years ago, we were looking at that number, really desiring to get there, and we're finally reaching that 80 percent, and I think it's going to grow past that in the near future as well. We've moved over 86,000 passengers in 2019, so our numbers have been quite good. Recently, the state of Idaho has done an impact, economic impact study, and they've included all airports in the state and what their impact was. And it's not totally complete, but we got some preliminary numbers, and I think it's pretty interesting with the numbers that they gave back to us, what the impact that our airport creates. They are saying that there is about 980 jobs that are impacted by the airport. There's about $43.3 million in earnings. The GDP is at 76.7 million, and the total output of the airport is estimated to be right around $178.4 million. That's pretty big numbers. Christie and I were talking the other day. It's been a number of years since they've done this, sort of a study, and the last number that we remember, and I don't know how long back that was, but it's probably been 10 years ago, I think it was somewhere around $39 million is what was calculated into that. So whether it's apples to apples or not, we have a big impact in the community and in the state with the things that are going on at the airport. Recently, we had an annual FAA inspection. It took place the last three days of January, and that is the inspection that we have to make sure that we're doing what we need to do, is a certificated airport, to run safely and efficiently and meet all those requirements that the FAA has on us. That went very, very well. We had one minor discrepancy that was written up. It was a paperwork item. It was able to be corrected and written off immediately, so we felt very good about that inspection. Things are going well in that arena. As many of you know, we have a lot of airport improvement projects that are coming forth. We'd like to thank the IT Department. They are getting us some fiber out to the airport, and that is almost completed, and that's going to be a great benefit to us. By doing that, we're going to be able to replace our crash alarm, which rings down from our tower to our fire station. That will be done through this fiber that's being installed. That's a system that's needed to be updated for a lot of years. Not a great way to do it prior to getting this fiber. So that's going to take place here in the real near future, and will be a big benefit. We've also got a piece of snow removal equipment that we're taking delivery off, probably by the end of the month. We've received a plow, this snow plow blower combination truck. We think the other portion of that will be in maybe in the next couple of weeks. We haven't quite hurried.
Just in time for summer.
Just in time. We may get a little bit of use out of it. We'll see how it goes.
Isn't that the one we bought last?
It is. It's the one that you had.
So we've missed two winters waiting for it.
Yeah, it's been a long time in the making, but it's finally showing up, so we're excited about getting that. That's going to be a nice piece.
Maybe we should have a ribbon cutting for it.
Yeah. Good idea. A couple of the other things that are going to be taking place this spring in our projects. We're going to be replacing the rotating beacon on top of the tower. That's getting aged pretty well. And there's going to be some air-filled electrical work in our vault. We're going to be upgrading the regulators that run our lighting there at the airport. There's also going to be quite a bit of construction work on the pavement surfaces. I think many of you are aware, we've got some taxiway project. It's going to replace some old pavements, and then we're also going to be doing an apron in front of our FBO, or Fixed Space Operator, the AV Center, in their parking area. So there's a lot of work that's going to be taking place after the weather changes just a little bit. As far as land development goes, we're still working with Frigitech on the cold storage facility, and we're still working on the rail transload station. Those things are progressing. Vanic Development's working very hard on getting some of those things coming a little bit quicker, so I think you'll see some things coming in reference to those two items. We've also built two new private hangars that have been built within the last year or so, and that's a big thing to us. We haven't built a hangar at the airport for over 18 years, and now we've built two really nice-sized hangars. So we're getting a little more interest in pilots looking at maybe doing some building at the airport, so we're excited about that. As far as air service goes, SkyWest at the present time is very happy with our current service to Salt Lake City. The mayor and I have been down and talked with SkyWest a little while back, and they seem very, very pleased with what's going on at the airport and want to continue to service us the best that they can. We're going to keep them abreast of many of the changes that are going on in our community so that they can prepare maybe a little bit better for the growth that's coming. As many of you know, we've applied for a SCASTI grant, a Small Community Air Service Grant. We're still waiting an answer on that grant. That grant is the one that will allow us to pursue service with a direct flight to Denver. We feel like that would be very successful, and we feel like we had a very strong application. Our consultant said that it was very well-received, so we're crossing our fingers, and any day now, we should, we're hoping to hear some good news on that.
We were hoping the middle of December, then the middle of January, so...
Yeah.
Federal government.
Federal government, Department of Transportation, but they, there's many airports, obviously, that have applied for this. Everyone's excited to hear. I'm sure they're getting a lot of pressure, so hopefully soon, we will hear something on that, one way or the other. We did a passenger demand study this year. That was part of something we needed to do for the SCASTI grant to go in, and passenger demand analysis tells us a number of things. It tells us, you know, who's using our airports, where they're going, what our top destinations are, how many people we're losing. And I'd like to share with you just a few small snippets from that study that we got. We have, Pocatello Airport has a catchment area. Basically, it's Bingham, Power County, Vanik County, Caribou, Bear Lake, Oneida. We go as far over as Rupert. We have a fairly good-sized area, about 44 zip codes are in our catchment area. Out of our catchment area, 24 percent of the travelers use our airport at Pocatello. There are about 55 percent who divert to Salt Lake City. Pretty large number. 11 go to Boise, and about 10 percent go to Idaho Falls, from what we can tell. We've got some work to do, as you can tell. We do retain 24 percent, but there's a lot that are still driving to Salt Lake City and going elsewhere. So we've got a lot of work on our hands to sell and to show them the value of flying out of our airport. We're working on that, obviously. Our top markets, just so you know, Las Vegas is our number-one destination. Los Angeles, Seattle, and Phoenix also are in those top. A lot of them are in the western side of the United States. We still think Denver is a great option for us. It opens up some travel to the east coast. With the FBI locating and doing what they're doing, we feel like they would use that a great deal. And it opens a whole different avenue, really, for our travelers to get where they're going, while we're still being served very well with the Delta Connection, the SkyWest and Delta out of Salt Lake. Kind of interesting on the international side, our top three destinations with international travelers are Guadalajara, Mexico, Mexico City, and Vancouver, Canada. So those are the things that we're seeing out of that study. We have a, I didn't bring the current airfare comparison, but I can tell you, as we've looked at that over the last number of months, and we keep up on the different airfare, how we compare with other locations, we're still holding about $100 benefit over flying out of Idaho Falls. It's closed a little bit over time. We were a little wider than that. It fluctuates, obviously, but we're still right around that $100 mark. We're approximately $200 more than going to Salt Lake City, and that's been pretty consistent as well. But if you calculate, as you've, probably many of you've heard, if you calculate the true mileage costs and the cost of truly going to Salt Lake City and flying out, that equals about $194, I think, according to our calculator, as we put those numbers in. So we're still a good bargain for people to, it's about a wash, if you will, to fly out of Pocatello and save some time and wear a tear on your car. So we're still promoting that fairly heavily. We're doing quite a bit in marketing and advertising at the airport. If you will recall, we got some additional monies with this new service that we were pursuing to be able to advertise and get the word out, and we thank you for that additional money that was put in our budget, and we're making very good use of that. We're, Rave Communications, Greg Gunter, is helping us with getting that message out, and we're doing well. Our website traffic has been up over the last month about 36 percent, so we're starting to see, we're just barely starting to kick into that advertising portion and get the word out, and we're starting to see some pretty good numbers coming back in what's A couple of interesting things. He came and reported to our commission this week, kind of gave some good insights. We, a lot of times, we've not had enough money in the budget to do a lot, other than maybe TV and some advertising in the paper, but we are, we are going to be looking at TV, radio, digital, newspaper. You've seen some outdoor billboard advertising. We're into that as well. And then we're also reaching out to specialty publications. Some of our students, BYU Idaho Group, students up in Brexburg will be getting in their packet that they're given some information on using the airport. And we're also using the technology of geo-fencing, where when people are on their phones, our ads will pop up to alert them of what we offer. So I think the advertising is going to go really well. You're going to see a lot more of it in the near future, and like I say, we thank you for those additional dollars. That was much needed in order to do this. Oh, I did miss a couple of things. I'm sorry on our improvement projects. Many of you have heard that we're doing, we've got the Japanese garden out there, and we're doing something in reference to an origami art display inside the terminal building out there. And so we've received some grant money from both the IFT and the Vice Line Foundations for Phase One, and Phase One is taking place. We've got a lot of pieces that are completed. We've got some cabinetry and some display cases that are being commissioned and working on getting that ready to go. We're starting into looking at putting applications in for the Phase Two portion of it to do the Vice Line and the IFT organization again. So many of you have probably seen the Japanese garden. That started out as a really small little project and grew into something very beautiful. That's somewhat what's happening here. We had a little idea, and as we are going through it, it's going to be fantastic. It's going to be probably a little bigger than we first originally thought, but I think it's going to be very, very nice and very, very informative to our travelers and something for them to enjoy, so. With that, I don't really have anything additional, unless there's some questions that you may have of us.
Questions, Council?
I think, Alan, could you explain the load on each of the three flights each day? I think when we talk about an 80 percent load factor, we assume each plane is 80 percent full, and that's not the case.
Yeah, it's, the seats that are available, we're selling about 80 percent of the total seats on all of the flights that come in. Obviously, if you've been out in the mornings, those aircraft are full. Overbooked, actually. They're actually giving vouchers to get you to take a later flight. We're starting to see even the afternoon flight coming in is very full, and going out has been quite high. So the afternoon is a little lighter, but the evening flight coming in, as many of you've been in on, that one's also full. So our capacity, we're starting to reach that capacity. We're doing well. Not to say we can't do better, obviously, but I think if we can get past that 80 percent, the airline is going to look at probably additional flights in to cover that capacity need. So yes, 80 percent is about where we're at, but yeah, not every flight is at 80 percent.
So with regard to that, why did they pull that fourth flight?
You know, that was a decision by the airline. They brought that in, I think, primarily on a temporary basis, as I was told, and I wasn't in this position at that time, but as I was told, there were five airports that they threw an additional flight in, and I think they did it somewhat, my take was to see how it would work. And we were fairly successful on that. Our numbers were not as high as we would have liked them to be. I think we were still running in the low 70s with that at the time. It added more seats, obviously, you know, by taking that away, the load factors numbers have come up. I don't know, I think that they probably had somewhere else that they needed those aircraft, because they pulled them all back from all five of those airports, as I was told, and did something different with those flights. So I don't think it was anything that we didn't particularly do well. I just think it was a trial. They had some options to throw some aircraft in, see what it would do, and it may have actually opened some doors for some things down the road, I think, to see that we were higher than a lot of the other airports.
If I remember right, they had, like I said, four or five other airports. They had four or five planes that were available that they had not designated to a certain area, and so they dropped a plane in a few different areas, but then if you remember Pocatello, they had the plane, and then they didn't for a few weeks, and then they had it back for a week or two, then they didn't for a few weeks, and so people lost, you know, they just stopped even booking it because they weren't confident it was going to be there or not. And so because of that, they stopped booking, and the load factor on that one really dropped when that happened, but they, then they just eliminated it altogether when they had another place for that airplane, that they were actually going to make some more money on it, so.
I will just say, when the mayor and I were down talking with SkyWest, we pitched that every time we've been down. There is some additional flights, you know, some more service, and so they know that we want it. I think with time, I think we will probably see that.
Their interest before was five flights to Salt Lake. They said, "We have, we need to get five flights to Salt Lake before we consider anywhere else." And this last time we were down, there was the first time they said, "You know what? We think we're good with three flights and one to Denver." So we're interested, they are interested in the Denver. They would like to add another flight to Salt Lake, but Denver is definitely on their minds, and they think it'd be a good one.
Are there other carriers that would be interested in our, because I think what we're doing is we're not, we're not pursuing competition when we stay with one carrier, and when we get competition, then it incentivizes the Salt Lake carrier to do more for us. And so I've heard that we were talking Frontier or somebody at one time for Denver, and so...
Maybe you want to address the Frontier. I think, I can tell you what little I know.
Go ahead.
As I recall, I think we did, maybe Christie's got some information that she'd like to share.
We knew we could pull Christie up to the table.
So the Denver service is going to be competitive. It's going to be United. SkyWest services all of your airlines now, so no matter which major airline you're going with, SkyWest is probably going to fly out for them. The way our market works, the major airlines do not, do not, I don't want to say do not want our service, but they don't want our service. And some of the other airports, like Idaho Falls, they fly at, Delta owns the service, United owns the service, and they pay SkyWest a flat fee to run it. They don't see that we're profitable enough for them, so they don't want it. So SkyWest has picked this up as an at-risk, so SkyWest has to make their own money with it, because Delta and United won't pay them to fly it. So we don't have a mainline carrier that wants to pick us up, so SkyWest is our in with the mainlines to get them to run it at-risk. We did approach Frontier a few years ago. They wanted more than a million to even talk to us at that point, and that was actually looking at Seattle. At this point, Seattle was so full that there is no gate space in Seattle, and any gate space that comes open will not be given to a non-hub like us. So low-cost carriers are going to be really hard right now, so you've got American, you've got Delta, you've got United. SkyWest, I think, is flying for all of them, and United is the one that they want to reach out to right now, so United is our option at this point.
But even if they go United, that still helps us to open more doors.
It will be a separate counter. It will be United service. It will be competitive, because they will be able to fly you on United to the same destinations Delta is flying.
Well, I've always felt like SkyWest-Delta is a monopoly, because they charge you for the privilege of flying out of Salt Lake often on their carrier, and there are other regional airports similar to Pocatello, that when you connect out, you have more options. You're not a captive audience of the speak, and I really think that would help us. I think that would really play into, when I was on the commission, we talked about this, it would really play into circumventing the only 24 percent capture of our consumer group. The more we diversify, the more that will expand for us, I believe.
Yeah, which the Denver service, I think, is a great option, because it is United. If we just got another to Salt Lake, it would be the same thing, so.
As someone that just drove to Denver last Thursday, that's why I wasn't at council, and all that junk, I could get to Denver faster, because of when I had to leave and drive through a snowstorm, then I could fly. Okay? And if I flew out of Salt Lake, I couldn't make my meeting the next day if I flew out of here. I had to be in Salt Lake at 5:00 to make my meeting in Denver. So be in Denver by 3:00, get some sleep, or, you know, get up at 1:00 to make my 5:00 flight. Those type of things, I think, a lot of people hit, and I, you know, we have groups also that I really think if we would pitch discounts, like when ON flies, often they'll fly a group of people to a certain destination, which is often, used to be Philippines, I don't know if it is now, but it seems to me like if you could get discounts for a group, we have large families that fly, it seemed to me that there were discounts for, you know, if you're buying five tickets out of here, why pay so much just to get to Salt Lake when they're going to capture you for the destination beyond that? So anyway, I just appreciate your work in competition.
Thank you.
And on that, I just read that Allegiant just added a direct flight from IF to San Diego. Have, have we talked to Allegiant at all about flying out of our airport?
A lot of years.
Because what I'm thinking is, if Vegas is our number-one destination, couldn't Allegiant fly directly from here to Vegas?
There's a couple of things with that. With Las Vegas being our top destination, that means we're already serving it well. We don't need service. That's our top destination. We're retaining the most people going there. We're servicing Las Vegas sufficiently. It's the lower destinations that nobody flies to out of Pocatello, because it's too expensive. The schedule isn't good. Most of them are on the eastbound. That's what the United service is going to open. We're already servicing the northwest very well. That's why they're our top destinations. The people are flying out of here and going to those destinations, because they can get there, and they can get there at a good rate. So the eastern market is what we really need to open up, which is what the United to Denver will help with. When Allegiant first came into Idaho Falls years ago, they approached both communities. We all offered them what we could. They chose Idaho Falls at this point, because they're there. Being a low-cost carrier like that, you will never get them in both communities so close together. There are positives to that. If you've ever spoken with anyone that flies on Allegiant, lots of the time, it's not a pleasant experience. All they do is take money out of your community, because they just go to those resort communities. They don't actually have employees at the airport. They contract, and when the plane doesn't show up, you just don't get your flight. It's a different sort of an airline. It's a, it's a leisure, not to say that it wouldn't be a great addition, but we did, we competed with Idaho Falls at that point. They chose to go to Idaho Falls, and all of the consultants have said, "Yes, you will never get Allegiant in two cities that are 40 miles apart."
I have another question. On the private hangars, could you tell me a little bit, so is that something that is going to be, private pilots are going to lease those out, or how is that, what's that going to?
Yeah, they've leased the property from the airport and built their own hangars.
And they've built their, so individuals or like?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, these two are just individuals.
Individuals.
On that note, do you still have a backlog on the existing hangars?
Small.
It's smaller. It's not what it used to be.
It's about three or four, but only a couple of them actually have planes. So the rest of them say, "Hey, we want to get a plane. If one comes open, let us know," and we'll start to move, but it's smaller than it used to be.
Because I, where did these hangars go in? Did they go in in that footprint for, the design was that there would be another hangar?
That's still open.
That's still open. Yeah, that's still open. These are, these are more up on the ramp surface up closer.
Have we entertained anything further about somebody going in and building the hangar? And there's a contract that you can, you can put in place, where they own it, they recover their costs, recoup some profit, but eventually that retires and becomes the ownership of the airport itself. A lot of public-private partnerships go that way.
We've been contacted by a few, and we have suggested that we could look into that, that they could build it, invest in it, and then lease it out. We've suggested to AV Center, they can't get it to pencil out with what people are willing to pay for hangars right now. The amount that it costs to build our first set, we could not pay for the loan payment with the amount of rent we were getting, which is why we haven't pursued the second amount. So we would love someone private to, and we have been approached by a couple, and we have suggested that and encouraged that. We think there is some demand, whether or not, how long it'll take them to recoup their investment, based on what people are willing to pay monthly, I think is what's slowing it down.
Well, you know, I have a friend that I've flown with, and he's private carrier, and I go into some of the small airports, and they have more hangars than we do.
People tend to like GA airports. Lots of times, pilots don't like to talk to a tower, so you'll see sometimes a lot of those that are just next to a commercial airport has a lot more hangars than GA traffic, because they don't have to deal with moving around the commercial aircraft and talking with the tower, and not unusual, yeah.
It's just some of the smaller communities seem to have more hangars.
That's kind of their niche, is their type of travel.
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to comment, add on to that, too. There's some legislation currently coming out of the House that could have an effect on our leases, too, so we're watching that closely, as I'm sure you are as well, but property tax legislation that could affect and make us have to raise those prices, but I think that could be a problem on especially some of the older buildings. If we have to raise the prices so high that the building isn't worth that much, we would have trouble actually leasing it, so.
You are exactly correct.
Hopefully, that's not going to go anywhere, but it is concerning.
Yeah, for sure.
Just one comment. I've heard the newest commercials on the radio.
Have you?
Yeah, and it's good, and they're playing quite often. And so, but when I figure, we always fly out of here, because to us, when I do the math, and it takes me five hours round trip, plus gas, plus parking, and the one thing I notice on the commercial is that they don't mention that you're paying for parking out there and you're not paying for parking here.
Did we miss that? Do we really think it's not in the radio?
Yes. I didn't hear it. Double check, but I didn't hear that, and to me, that's a big deal.
That is one of our biggest comments, and so we try to highlight that.
Yeah, so just double check it. I might have missed it, but I've heard it a few times, and every time, I think, "Oh, they don't say anything about free parking," and that's a big deal when you drive out to SLC.
It is very much. Yeah, we can alter that quickly.
So yeah, just double, and I could be wrong, but I just wanted to mention that, because that's a big one. But thank you. You guys are, you guys are doing a good job.
As long as we're on the marketing dollars. One of the things that was brought up at the meeting Tuesday of the Airport Commission, Greg Gunner was there from Rave Communications and talked about the way the marketing dollar increase has been spent. He's devised a really clever geo-fencing project, so if you go to the Idaho Falls Airport and you leave there, you immediately on your phone get a message that talks about how much cheaper it would have been if you'd used the Pocatello. it would have been if you'd used the phone.
That's awesome.
Very clever use of social media and technology, and it's inexpensive to do that, and it's a clever use of dollars.
Awesome. That's great. Love that. Thank you very much. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to agenda item number three, is Pocatello Development Authority update. Representatives from Pocatello Development Authority, PDA, will discuss the PDA's goals and projects as well as council's policies and expectations.
Good morning. Melanie Giggly, Director of Planning and Development Services, and in that position, the interim executive director for the PDA. Here with me are Scott Smith and Chad Carr, who are the chairman and vice chairman of the PDA.
Thank you, Melanie. Let me just jump right to it. 2019 was a pretty good year for the Pocatello Development Authority, in my judgment. Let me, I just want to review some of what I consider our successes from last year and take any questions that you might have. The, probably the first thing that I would mention has to do with the North Yellowstone Urban Renewal Area. If you're familiar with that, it's generally, and you should have a packet in front of you, it's spiral bound. If you care to flip through it, you'll see on page six, it talks about the North Yellowstone Urban Renewal Area. It's generally the area up towards Lo, Lo's, towards Bosco. That's been a TIF district for about 10 years now. The schedule to be a 20-year plan, we were able to close it 10 years early, which is significant. We're able to pay off the bonded debt 10 years early. It's been wildly successful in my judgment. When it was closed, we were able to return almost a million and a half dollars to the taxing entities, and we were able to place nearly $66 million on the tax roll. If there was an example of how a TIF district should be created and run and the benefit it should provide to a city, this is, this is the example that we should follow. It's not the only way that a TIF can benefit a city, but this one has definitely, I think, benefited Pocatello, and it's been very successful. And we are, again, happy to report that we were able to close it nearly 10 years early and get those, get the property value back on the tax rolls. And it's doing what it's doing. It's continuing to be a successful area town. So, that urban renewal area has been closed, and it's off our books. But we have a new one that you're very familiar with. Last year, we proposed, and the city council approved the establishment of the North Gate Urban Renewal Area. That's been approved, and we're waiting for development to occur. We're hoping, projections are that we may see a tax increment coming in in 2021 or 2022. That's typically how these development projects work, and it takes that amount of time before the projects go in and the taxes start hitting the increment that we use for this. There has been some confusion in the community about how this was funded. Okay? They think, incorrectly believe that North Gate was funded through bonds or loans, or we just wrote checks, but that's not accurate. The way that North Gate has been funded with the developers that are involved, the private entities that were involved, is that they have assumed all of the financial risk, 100% of it. If the tax, if they're able to accomplish the development that they are projecting, the increment will come in, and only if it comes in, do they get reimbursed at certain levels under the plan. If they fail to get in the projects and the development that they are hoping for, then the increment won't come in, but that just means that they don't get the reimbursement. So, we were able to set it up in a way that we did not have to take on any debt, and yet, we were able to get this TIF in and incentivize this project enough that it could move forward, and we are hoping and expecting that it will. As part of that North Gate project, we can also report, and you are well aware, that the Cyphon Interchange went in, the Pocatello Development Authority. By the way, that was a key aspect of the North Gate project. It's really the first domino that needed to be placed in order for that development to move forward, and the Pocatello Development Authority did contribute monetarily to help put that in. And just so it's clear to everyone who may not have been involved in that process, I hope I don't leave anyone out, but the Pocatello Development Authority contributed to that interchange, City of Pocatello did, City of Chubak did, Bannock County?
Let me correct. Bannock County did.
Bounty County.
The City of Chubak did not.
Let's be really clear about that.
Yeah, they did not participate in the overpass.
And I'm only mentioning that because as the tax increment comes in from the development in North Gate, the very first dollars go to reimburse the city and the Pocatello Development Authority for their contribution to the interchange. The developer is second. So, again, we put this together in a way that we can significantly reduce any risk to the government entities. And the developer only receives assistance from the increment if he actually produces, what he says he will. If he doesn't, then he won't. So, we do have the North Gate Urban Renewal Area, and we have, so that's the first one that we have right now. We have three other urban renewal areas on our books at the moment. We have the North Portonah Urban Renewal Area, and this is where the old Hoku site is located. I can report that we have recently sold the Hoku property through an RFP process. And to give you a little bit of context, yeah, I'm not sure.
It's 12.
12.
It's 12.
Yeah, 12 to 13.
I'm doing these out of order. So, to give a little bit of background, the North Portonah Urban Renewal Area was created primarily to incentivize the Hoku development. Well, we all know what happened with that. At Hoku, financial problems, they went into bankruptcy. There were issues with who owned the property and who owned the structures above it. The bankruptcy court ended up through a process I'm not going to talk about, but through the bankruptcy court, the City of Pocatello took possession of that property and then transferred it to the Pocatello Development Authority, which is a law-abol statute, and the Pocatello Development Authority agreed to pay the city a certain amount for that property. That's the background. We recently were able to sell this Hoku property for, how much was it?
1.25 million.
1.25 million, and we are in the process of paying off the amount to the city. Do you remember what that number was?
224.
224.
248.
That's why we have these.
The athlons, right.
And we are hoping to be able to finalize that soon. That's going to require a budget amendment for the Pocatello Development Authority, and we're in the process of doing that, and then we will have that paid to the city. And then I'll also say that the PDA board is now going to have to decide what to do with that district. If you have any thoughts on that, we'd be happy to hear. But that's where it is. That's the North Portonah Urban Renewal Area, and we are glad, and honestly, I'll be really blunt about it, to kind of wash our hands of the Hoku property.
So, my suggestion would be close the district.
Okay, noted.
Then you're really through with it.
You know. All right. So, now, let me mention, we just heard from the folks at the airport. So, our third TIF district, urban renewal area, I want to mention, is the Pocatello Regional Airport Urban Renewal District. It's, I will say, slowly moving along. We do have, we've heard Frigitech mention. Frigitech has approached the Pocatello Development Authority to participate in this TIF district. So, Frigitech's in the works. You know, they have an interest, and they still have some steps and things that they need to deal with, but they have approached the PDA. The PDA board has expressed their interest in assisting to the extent we can. But we're very careful, and hopefully, you understand this, but as an agency, we are, we have, we are really trying to be fiscally conservative and careful. So, when Frigitech comes in, we are making them do a financial feasibility, economic feasibility study to make sure that what they're saying, what they're projecting the increment will be from their development, you know, that that makes sense and that it'll develop the kind of increment that they are asking for as reimbursement for their project. So, it makes sense, and it balances. So, we're really very careful about that. And again, it's just, in my view, a little bit in the starting phases, at least with the PDA, but I just want to mention that. So, that looks good for the Airport Urban Renewal District. So, now, we're to the last one, and that's the Naval Ordnance Plant Urban Renewal District. This one has been on the books for quite a while, I want to say about 15 years. These urban renewal areas can only be opened for 20, and then they have to automatically close. So, this one only has about five years left. It does continue to create over $200,000 in increment every year, and we are careful to use it to make improvements out there, but, and to keep the businesses that are out there and the jobs that are out there and incentivize new ones to come in. It's a big plant, and I'll tell you, that kind of money doesn't really go very far out there. But we do what we can. But again, that district is scheduled to close in 2026. So, those are our four districts. Another matter I just want to mention because this directly involves the city, for quite some time, the PDA has benefited happily, you can see me smiling over here, from the assistance of city staff. Melanie here is our interim executive director. We have had others from the city who regularly help our board with the finances, the record-keeping, preparing our balance sheets, and helping us that way. We also have Merrill here. He helps us quite a bit as well, keeps us on task when we're dealing with developments. For quite some time, again, back to my smile, we haven't, we have, the city has kindly allowed us to use that staff without cost. But I just want to report that recently, the board has approved a resolution to start reimbursing the city for that, for the assistance we get from staff, and we're happy to do that. We have, there's money in the budget for that, and we can, we're definitely going to do that from here on out. So, happy to do that. And lastly, you'll see in the packet, we do have some financial statements, balance sheet, profit-loss for 2019, I believe. And I just want to report that our financials are sound. We are living within our budgets. We are being fiscally conservative, and again, the city does not, as far as I understand, the city does not give the PDA money, doesn't come out of the city's budget. It all comes out of the tax increment generated from these TIF districts, and we're really very careful with that. You'll see that when, as an example, when the North Yellowstone area was closed recently, we had received in this increment. We had a million and a half dollars in our account. Sure would have been nice for our board to keep it, but by law, we closed the district and returned it, and so, to the taxing entities, including the city. So, that's, you know, that's how these things work, and our goal isn't to keep these things open forever, to only keep them open for as long as is necessary to accomplish the plan and to benefit the city. So, that's our goal, and that's kind of our approach. So, that's my 2019 report.
Okay. One of the things it talks about in this agenda is that you're going to present goals and projects as well as policies and expectations.
Yes.
I don't want to go back and reproduce all the North Gate stuff, but I really do think the PDA is larger than just attracting businesses. Its primary job is first to protect Pocatello. And when you rebuffed doing any type of assessment on the impact that that district would have on the rest of Pocatello, I do not think you fulfill that obligation. Because, right now, we are contesting legislation at the state level that will curtail what we can do in taxation. The rationale for that contestment has directly application to what we approved in terms of the TIF district, the allocation of resources without reimbursement. And we have committed for, through 2041, to provide resources in that district without hardly any remuneration coming to the city in forms of taxes. And I really think that for the PDA to be consistent in terms of representing the city of Pocatello, you have to do a comprehensive study that looks at the district, how it will perform within its boundaries, but also have to look at how it will affect the rest of the city. And if we're presuming that there are impacts that legislation can have on us because of taxation, there are impacts that come on us by legislation we do in terms of TIF districts.
And Commissioner, Councilman Ray, let me, I just have one kind of response, and I think it's kind of important to understand the role that the PDA plays with respect to these urban renewal areas. The PDA does not create or approve urban renewal areas or TIF districts or TIF plans. The PDA simply recommends to city council, and then, if approved, manages those areas. So, ultimately, it's the city council who makes the decision about whether to approve an urban renewal area based upon the information that's presented to them. Whether or not an additional study needed to be made or not was a decision that the city council at the time needed to make.
Well, we were told that it was taken to you three different times, and you rebuffed it.
Well, ultimately, we don't approve these districts. That's my point.
Yeah, but my point is, for us to have the correct, comprehensive information that includes the impact of the TIF district on all of the taxpayers, all of the citizens, not just in Pocatello, but county as well, we need to know what that will perhaps do to us, what will it do to existing businesses. That is, I believe, part of the PDA. You expand beyond these TIF districts and how you engage businesses in our community. And from my perspective, that for us to not do a comprehensive study and now be talking about legislation that is not comprehensively addressing us and our needs in terms of taxation and being able to fund what infrastructure will require is counter to it.
I'm just going to add this, though. I want to just clear the air with everything. This TIF district was not set up any different than any of the other TIF districts set up. In fact, this TIF district was set up to protect the city, to protect the citizens a lot more than any of the other TIF districts were set up in the recent, I would say, 20 years, 15 to 20-year setup. And for example, though it worked great, the North Yellowstone district was a very, very risky district to set up because we bonded for it. Had that not worked, the city would have been responsible for it. The city council at the time approved that. This North Gate, and you don't want to dig that up, but you're digging it up. So, the North Gate TIF district today has provided a $38 million project to the community, to the citizens, that we would not have, that would not happen, and it opened up the opportunity for development that the city, for 100 years, has not had the opportunity. So, we can argue back and forth whether or not this was a good decision or not. This was an incredible decision. This, the city, for $500,000, the City of Pocatello got a $38 million project completed. Public-private partnerships, the people that are hanging out there right now that have 13, 14, maybe 15 million dollars worth of infrastructure that they have put in, have put that in on their own dime with the hope that they will be successful. Today, the city has been successful with that. If nothing happens there, if nothing happens there today, we have a $38 million project that benefits our community. It has been more than It has been more than successful, and it's cost us nothing. So I just want to be clear on that. And we're not here today to argue one way or another, back and forth, any of that, but I just need to make sure it's very clear.
Well, I disagree. I disagree. I believe, I believe that we endorse the PDA to be proactively defending the city of Pocatello in all aspects.
They 100% did.
And to not do a study, and to now go to the legislature and say, "We are going to incur terrible, terrible, terrible repercussions if you do what you're doing, because you are isolating us from our taxing affiliates."
Let's be clear, the, the taxing legislation in Boise right now that is being discussed, that is affecting the rest of the state, is because of Boise and the Ada County. That is where it is. You talk to any legislator that's over there, that is the issue, not the PDA and the TIF districts that we've created here. Thank you very much. There's no reason for you to sit here and listen to an argument back and forth. We're not going to continue this argument, not here. Thank you very much.
I disagree, Mayor. I want to, I want to raise objection. I want to raise objection to your prematurely terminating our discussion. We are here to get goals, we are here to find out the plans, and we're not receiving them. We need to be talking about going forward, and that's the only way you can address goals is going forward.
I also would like to object to the fact that I have other questions that aren't necessarily related to Northgate that I am not being given a chance to ask. So if we're not going to continue now, that's fine, but then I would like to leave here knowing when and under what circumstances we will be.
So, so, so I'm happy to give you the opportunity to ask a question, but we are not going to continue to beat a dead horse. So I'm happy for that discussion and, and any kind of questions that may, you may have for the PDA, but we're not going to dig up old, whether or not the North Yellowstone or the Northgate TIF district was inappropriate, done and handled appropriately by the PDA. So with that, please, ask the question.
So I am, based on the agenda item, interested in the fact that we were going to talk about, I thought, goals. And I think one of the ways to clarify situations that become unclear and therefore cause consternation on a variety of fronts is to have clear goals from the PDA that are also attached to budgetary explanations, and then these end-of-the-year reports become in large degree using those goals and the monetary attachments as benchmarks for the report. So for example, we heard, and I have been as, just as a, as a citizen, hearing about the refrigeration project at the, at the airport for some number of years, and one of my questions is, do we have any kind of ETA on when that might be, based on what you know and I don't, you know, or, or is it?
I know, maybe I'll respond to that, is, I, we know very little about Frigitech. You need to realize that when they came to us, they're not asking us to fund their project.
Right.
You know, we are one tiny little piece in their puzzle to make their project work. I haven't been hearing about Frigitech for years, we've only heard from them initially, maybe a couple months ago, and they were asking about the TIF district and whether or not that could help them as one small piece in their project. So I don't really have anything more than that to report on Frigitech.
So would it be possible? Because what you've just said, for example, is very helpful. So is there a way, perhaps, that these, again, that these reports could be structured around potential projects, giving the opportunity upfront for information of the sort that you just shared to be put out there? Because I think it would create a different kind of clarity.
Thank you. Yeah, they have, Frigitech, and maybe Chad and Melanie can remind me, they sent a representative to one of our meetings. Our meetings are open to the public, and our agendas and minutes are online, so it's, it's fully out in the open. You know, Frigitech, right now, in my view, is just one of those projects that's sort of just barely beginning. They may do it, they may not, they may be able to get their ducks in a row, maybe they won't. We really have very little to say with regard to that. Usually, companies coming in want to keep it close to the chest.
Right.
And, and we can't even disclose it until they give us authorization or choose to show up at a public meeting. But Frigitech did. But again, I don't have much to report, other than they have come to our open meeting one, at least once, and mentioned it. And I only mentioned Frigitech today because we heard it from the airport folks as well. And maybe the mayor knows more what's going on with Frigitech, but we just don't.
Right.
So Councilwoman Stevens, if you look down to Agenda Items, Bannock Development Corporation, they've been working with them, and the PDA really is the host of the taxes and how those are reimbursed to companies and stuff like that. The Development Corporation is the one that would really truly be able to give us more of an idea of what those companies look like. And so, in regards directly to like the, like Frigitech, I'm sure John will have an opportunity to, to answer that question, where are they at, what, what, what does it look like?
Okay.
And so, we do have, there is different layers of economic development and, and Bannock Development's here, so that they can give us a report.
Right. And I guess, having done a number of annual reports in a completely different venue, you know, I'm, I'm used to saying, okay, these are the things that even, even touch what my responsibilities are tangentially. However, you know, that will be reported on, you know, over here, or, you know, that really isn't under my control, even though it has a tangential connection to my responsibilities. You know, and it just creates real clarity, because there is confusion, there's terrific confusion out in the community. And I'm interested in how perhaps the various layers around development could work together collaboratively to help the public be able, in a reasonable amount of time, given the fact that they all have busy lives and children going to soccer and ballet, help the public easily get their, more easily get their arms around what is going on around development. I think it would do a great deal to help our community ethos.
And I agree. I think as much public information and knowledge we can get out, the better. Just remember that for the PDA, our focus right now are the four urban renewal areas on our, on our books, and the ones we've mentioned. We, and yes, we do have, we do always have our eyes open, and we're ready to hear and listen to proposals around town, but if we're going to do anything outside of those four districts, we have to go through creating a new urban renewal plan. Northgate took us a long time for that, and we just don't even have one in the works right now.
Right.
So our focus is, are those four districts. The Northgate District, you know, that plan was last year, and right now, there's nothing, our goal is to sit back and see if the developer can get things in the ground. And the other projects, Nor, uh, the Airport District, we've talked about Frigitech, that's the primary thing that may be, or maybe not, in the works. Naval Ordnance Plant, nothing's being built out there, we're just doing what we can with the few dollars that come in to kind of help improve the looks. And the North Port, and if we just sold Hoku, and considering what to do with that district. So, you know, our purview right now is pretty limited. So I was hoping that through my presentation this morning, you could just understand that those are our focuses. If there is a developer, if, if Mr. Reggitts through Bannock Development can, you know, finds a, a developer who is interested in building in one of those areas, or has a proposal that makes sense for a new urban renewal district, you know, we'd gladly accept it, or gladly consider it and think about it and, and move forward possibly, so.
Would you be open to meeting with me to just discuss, perhaps, what might be able to be done to facilitate clear communication around, not about what you, someone thinks you should or shouldn't have done, but the realities? Because I think, you know, the development structure in this area is unclear to the public, and I don't think that's difficult to clarify. I think it just takes a little thoughtful consideration among the various entities, and I would love to sit down with you and have you help me think through, how might we get this into a digestible chunk so that the public can better understand?
Meetings are open to the public, I know that, and so...
Yeah, we always invite every...
Oh, right. I'm talking about sitting down specifically and talking about trying to structure some kind of clear public communication, which, which I, it's not your typical, I'm sure, what your board typically considers. So I'm asking if you're open to me approaching you about this communication issue, because I think it would benefit the entire community.
So I know, we have had some members that have, because I've been going to the PDA meetings, really for over the last year, just as an observer, but the PDA board members have had some discussions about things that they could do, I mean, and they haven't rolled it out yet, but they have had some preliminary discussions about maybe getting some infographics or something to help people better understand what an urban renewal district is, what a TIF is. So they have been...
For the website and for...
Yeah, they have been talking about that, and so I just wanted to let you know that they're...
Great.
And of course, any of the citizens who have come to those meetings are aware of that too, and, and I'm sure it's reflected in the minutes, but I just wanted to let you know that they're...
That's great.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's a difficult thing, and if somebody's not really 100% invested in, in understanding it, you know, it's, it's hard for probably just a regular person to immediately know, and know what it is, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, great, then I would, I'd love to, you know, hear your thoughts on what the ETA on rolling out, what you've been already considering might be.
Not now. 2020.
Not now, but I'm just saying at some...
We, we, as a board, only meet once a month.
Right. And I plan to attend those.
Yeah, that'd be great. You're always welcome.
Yeah.
So, all right, thank you. I'll follow up.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ortega.
I have, I have two questions for you, actually.
You bet.
One is, you've mentioned a few times, if the, the developer at Northgate can get this off the ground, if, if, so I'm just wondering, because I, I'm not very savvy when it comes to these TIF districts, what happens if they, if they don't? What, what happens to that TIF, to that TIF? I mean, can you, in a nutshell, tell me what happens?
I think nothing happens there. If, if they don't do it, then, then nothing happens.
Nothing.
Kind of like the, kind of like the Hoku site right now.
But they lose all their...
Yeah, they took the risk.
No, no, I understand, I'm just wondering if there's any, any fallout to them, okay.
So if nothing were to happen anymore on Northgate, if, if, if nothing more happened...
Then they lose their investment.
Not only they lose their investment, but we put our money into the interchange, and we have that, and the roads that were built, regardless.
No.
So we have benefited, and we wouldn't lose anything.
Right. No, no, and I get that.
So that's all that would happen.
So, and I, and so I'm just curious.
Yeah, so we, there, there is nothing that binds us to reimbursing them, other than the taxes that they create to be able to reimburse. The city is out of that picture, the city is not paying a penny more for any of that. If nothing happens there, then we don't have to, I mean, we have a $30 million asset, but we don't have...
Any obligation.
Any obligations for any of that other stuff. So that's, that's...
We, we, we don't have any obligation to pay for the infrastructure that's in place, but we will, we already have assumed a liability to plow the roads, sand the roads, service the roads that are in there.
So, so that happens, we pay for, the same thing we pay for everybody else. You had a second question, the, the plowing services or something like that. But she had another question.
But I'm explaining, the other part of it is, if they just develop to a park, where they're not recovering costs, we still incur the service costs for police, for fire, for sanitation, all of those costs go on, regardless of how much they build. We can be going up there to service one house.
Whoa.
If one house is put in, we still have to provide services to it.
Be very margin, very minimal.
Be very minimal, for sure.
We have to plow the road.
Okay, we're not going to debate whether or not it was good or bad, I think it was a great question, you got a second question.
Everybody, everybody, take a breath. I was just curious, sir, is that, is the new FBI building a federal owned, is it a federal building, or is it, are they leasing it?
It's not within the Naval Ordnance Plant District.
It's not?
It's not, yeah.
Okay. But do you, do you know the answer to my question?
It is a federal building, yes.
It's a federal building, so they're, they're, okay. All right, so we're not getting any taxes?
No.
On that line?
That's outside of what we oversee.
Okay. Gotcha.
So I just don't know.
All right, thanks.
Any questions down here? I just might add this, very quickly. Thank you very much for the work that you do. Melanie Giggly, this is your last city council meeting that you will ever have to attend for the rest of your life. You may come back at any time you would like to attend.
There's those discussion items at the end of your agenda.
That you may come back to, but I bet you don't for a while, anyway. Thank you, thank you, thank you for your service to the city of Pocatello for 30...
30 years.
30 years.
Thank you.
It's unbelievable. Thank you for everything you've done for us. I think that we owe her an honor. Thank you.
It has been my pleasure.
Thank you. We will move on now to Agenda Item Four, Fire Union Quarterly Update. Members of the Pocatello Fire Union will give the council an update of their activities for the past quarter.
Morning, Mayor, Council.
Ruth.
Adam Davis, Local 187 Fire Union Vice President. On behalf of our union, I'd like to say, thanks for meeting with us and letting us give our update. With that, I'll turn the floor over to Andy.
And I'm Andy Moldenhauer, President of the Pocatello Firefighters, Local 187. It's kind of funny that you were talking about Melanie and her last meeting, and doesn't have to be here anymore, but we've got Michael Orr, Councilmember, who doesn't have to be here anymore, but I guess chooses to be.
It's a fun place to be.
Yeah. With, with that in mind, I would like to send well wishes to former Councilman Gary Moore, who recently lost his father. But anyway, I'll get on with the task at hand. We've been really busy since the last time that we met with you guys, and we've been, we've been busy because, because it's been a little while, but it's also because this is the busy time of year for us, both in calls and in, and in requests for assistance. We raised about $12,000 to fill the boot, and that money goes to the MVA and supports local muscular dystrophy cases, it supports kids going to camp, and that money's kept here locally. In October, we had our annual pink t-shirt event, where we wore our pink t-shirts for the, while we were at work on Fridays and Saturdays, and during that, we raised approximately $3,000, which we donated to the Portman Cancer Foundation to support breast cancer causes. Further, we've partnered with the police union, and in doing that, we donated a bunch of turkeys for Thanksgiving, and we also partnered to help put on the city's diaper drive, which was headed by Councilwoman Lyric. We provided the prizes for that, and I think it was a fairly successful event. Hopefully, it'll be better next year.
Not bad for a first time.
Absolutely. And also, it was, it was a hard time to do that, because it was, it was at the same time as the city was doing their United Way Drive, and so it's, so it's hard when two different places are asking for money at the same time. And so it was a little bit more challenging, but it was successful. And so it was a little bit more challenging, but it was successful. We have also done Operation Worm, which is where we give coats to kids at the school district. This year, we gave out 324 kids, and we received this letter from all of the schools in the school district, and I'm just going to read one little segment of this. If you guys would like to see more, then I'm glad to put it up there, and you guys can pass it around. But it says, "Jason, today at Jefferson, we had a student whose old coat was covered in gasoline. His mom wasn't able to buy him a new coat. I was able to get him a new Operation Worm coat, and he was so happy. Thank you so much for taking care of our kids." And that was from Jefferson Elementary. So that's been a great project, and it's been one that, for us, it's really rewarding because we're able to, to meet directly with the kids as we're giving them the coats. And you get to see those coats be passed down from kid to kid. You know, you'll, you'll, you'll look and you'll see one of our coats from previous years that somebody's younger brother's wearing or something like that. We've got Seattle Stairclimb coming up. We've got six members going over to Seattle to climb the Columbia Tower to raise money for leukemia and lymphoma society. Their goal this year was to raise $10,000 in donations to take with them, and it looks like they're going to far exceed their goal. And just, just to kind of point out, the, the money that they get in donations goes directly to the society. They pay for the trip out of their own pocket. We give a small reimbursement out of the union to help cover some hotel and stuff like that, but, but otherwise, they're doing this on their own dime. And so it's a great cause, and, and it's a, it's an amazing event. This year, our local is sponsoring a local kid who has leukemia. His name's Cash, and we're, we're paying for his family and him to travel over to Seattle, and he's going to be an honorary guest at this, at this event. And so that's, that's been a really touching thing, to be able to, to be in contact with this boy. Upcoming, oh, and the Stairclimb is on March 8th in Seattle, just so you guys are aware. Upcoming, we've got Guns and Hoses Chili Cook-Off that benefits CASA. That'll be on March 20th from 6:00 to 9:00 at the Memorial Building. And in that, you know, we again partner with the police or with police organizations, and generally speaking, there will be a firefighter chili and a police chili. Sometimes it's, sometimes it's the Pocatello Police, sometimes it's Bannock County sheriffs. But, but we kind of compete to see who has the best chili, but really, the goal is to raise money for, for a good cause.
Don't the firefighters usually win that one?
You know, the, the police...
We've got the peanut gallery.
I'll tell you what, those guys are actually really good cooks, and...
Are we going to have a brawl here?
No, no, they have pens. We're not that...
They have guns, they only have Moses.
Hence the name. Can you repeat the, the date and the location from that?
Yes, that's March 20th at the Memorial Building from 6:00 to 9:00.
Thank you.
And hopefully, you guys were able to attend and, and try it out. I mean, like I said, it's a, it's a good cause. CASA does a lot of good things in, in town, and, and even though we sometimes lose to the police, we, we have a good time with it.
Andy, is that a ticketed event, or do you...
You know, I am not positive. I think that there's probably a donation to get in.
Is it, is it a ticket?
Yes, you can, you can purchase a, a individual ticket, or you can buy a table. I know the tables are about $120, $120 on that. And then there's a cake auction, and, and there's also a donation at the Chili booth themselves, so...
Okay. And so where do, where would people buy a ticket?
So if you go to the Six District CASA website, there's information on that, on that there.
So, so we got our Police Chief Shai that's given us that information for the people at home. Go to the CASA Six District website. You can get the tickets, buy the tickets there. You can buy them individually and also buy a table, it sounds like.
And I believe there's an event on Facebook that also gives you all this information and the links to get the tickets.
It's awesome. It's fun.
You can also buy them at the, at the events.
So, thank you, Chief, but we got the fire up here talking now.
Thank you for adding that, Chief. We'll have Tony there. Tony does a pretty good work, so hopefully, hopefully, we come out victorious this year. Then, moving on, our, our state organization, PFFI, has currently sponsored a bill that we're trying to get, to get passed. It's in the Senate Committee. It's Bill, the Senate Bill 1302, and it's kind of aimed at resolving differences and disputes in negotiations. What it does is it kind of formalizes the fact-finding process. So if you reach impasse in negotiations, then the statute currently allows for fact-finding. What this bill would do is make the, make fact-finding binding. And so, so what happens now is if you go to fact-finding and one or the other side wins, then that decision's not binding both parties. And, and so that kind of takes, that takes the finality out of it. But, but we, we introduced a bill similar to this last year, and it had difficulty gaining, gaining traction. So what we did is we pulled it back, and we tried to make a little bit better legislation, and we added a two-week window for mediation after, after groups reach impasse to try to resolve their differences before they would go to fact-finding. And then after fact-finding, the fact-finding panel, which is a neutral panel that, that looks at things just based on the facts and then makes a decision. After the fact-finding panel makes a decision, now with the current legislation that we're pushing, there would also be a two-week window where both sides could sit down at the table and try to, try to come to agreement at the table before, before that decision would become final. It's, it's really geared at trying to, trying to improve the process and try to have, trying to have mutual respect between both parties. And so we're hoping for support on that, and I just wanted to make you guys aware that that was one of, one of our legislative agendas. But as far as things go, that's, that's all that we've got. Do you guys have any questions?
Questions?
Where is that bill? I mean, where, where are you at on it?
So, so it's been printed, and it's currently in the Senate Committee. What will happen is the Senate Committee will review it, and then they'll determine whether or not it goes to the Senate floor. If it passes the Senate floor, it'd go to the House and then the Governor, but, but as of right now, it, it's in committee.
And do you have specific legislators who are overtly supporting, backing, carrying this through the process?
You know, I don't know who, I don't know who sponsored it, and I don't know if there were any co-sponsors. I do, I, I do know, or I can get you the, the legislators that are on that committee, one of, one of which is our, our local representative, Jim Guthrie. But I, other than that, I can, if you'd, if you'd like, I can share that information.
I would really appreciate that information because then that makes it possible for, again, for the public, should they choose to weigh in one way or the other, even though it's still in committee, that can be very useful. And, you know, I would appreciate having that information so it can be shared with the community.
Yes, ma'am. I will email that to you after we're done here.
Thank you.
Just one comment. I wanted to thank you for all that you do, but particularly to thank you for supporting our first annual diaper drive, and I hope that we're going to make that an annual thing and, and build it up every year. And so thank you to you and the police for supporting the prizes and, and making that the success that it was, so...
Thank you for bringing it forward. I mean, it's, it's good when we can get clauses that we can get behind, and certainly, the community does need diapers. I know that there's a huge demand for that through the, through the Health and Welfare Department, and that's kind of how you ended up becoming involved, is, is becoming aware of that. And so anything we can do to help, it's, it's always good to have a good cause to get behind.
Thanks.
Super. Okay. Thank you.
And would you guys like to look at that, or...
You read, you read it.
I only read from one school, but all of the schools did actually, actually write something.
Yeah. Now, we appreciate what you do with that. Code drive is really, really important for our, our students, for sure, so thank you.
Thank you.
We will move to Agenda Item 5, Hispanic Development Corporation update. John Reggitt, Bank Development Corporation, BDC Executive Director, will be present to give council an update of BDC's activities and achievements.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Reggitt's just handed me his thumb drive. Do I have to scan this? Do we want to move to the next item?
Let's, let's move then to the next one, yes.
Give me a couple more minutes.
We will, we'll move to Agenda Item 6, the TNR...
We could take a break. We'll have it in a couple minutes.
You know what? I think we're going to take a break. I'm sorry to bring you up here all the way and then take a break on you.
It's okay.
So we're going to go ahead and take a break for about five minutes, and let's try to hold it to five minutes. We're not good at that, but... Thank you very much for joining us after our break. We'll go ahead and continue on with Agenda Item Number 5, Hispanic Development Corporation update. John Reggitt, Bank Development Corporation, BDC Executive Director, will be present to give council an update on, of BDC's activities and achievements. John?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I appreciate you giving me a few minutes to give you an update on what we're doing with various projects and, and our promotional efforts as well. And as always, we appreciate your support over the years and your collaboration. It's a team process. And so I will rely on you to help me for new members, not gloss over things that I assume everybody already knows. I'm going to try to explain some things as I get into the subject matter. One of the things that we do, of course, is we ostensibly go out and we recruit companies to come into the community, but our first order of business is to expand our local companies because they're the ones that have the most opportunity to expand the old saw. Well, it used to be 80%, but 70% more recently of all new jobs are created by existing businesses. So first order of business is work with our existing companies. But, and we'll talk more about that. But some of last year's efforts for sales and hosting and having the site visits, we had eight site visits last year, and I think that's the second or the third highest level that we've had since I've been here, and it's been eight years since I started. We processed 33 applications or inquiries from potential companies, and 19 of those were direct. We had six from Select USA Trade Show and six from Commerce and two from Ready. And we attended these conferences and trade shows, Nuclear Waste Management. Obviously, with our presence near INL, this is a, a good place to go look for supply chain candidates. Select USA with Commerce, which is a venue where foreign companies that want to come to the U.S. visit booths that basically have states representing their economic development commissions. SHOT Show, which we actually just got done with recently and had some good responses on it. We did that last year as well, and Silicon Slopes. Again, we've done that this year. And then the Site Selectors Guild, where national site selectors, people that help companies find locations to expand in, they are all gathered there, and folks like us, as well as other professional companies, network with them there.
John, could you just catch us up a little bit? Explain what SHOT Show is and, and just go back to the last slide.
Sure.
SHOT Show and Silicon Slopes, those are kind of acronyms for...
Right, right. SHOT Show is National Shooting Sports Foundation's Trade Conference, and that focuses mainly on sporting-related goods sales, and we've talked to the companies in terms of their manufacturing. So there are firearms manufacturers, ammunition manufacturers, knife manufacturers, anything that revolves around hunting and shooting sports, not so much, you know, like fishing or mountain climbing, but biking, but specifically the, the shooting-oriented type sports and then related products thereof. So what that translates to us is, is advanced manufacturing. So firearms manufacturers, knife manufacturers are going to be in machining and in steel fabrication, which is a very main component, major component of our economy, and has been ever since the New York Pacific, you know, started the community up way back when. So that's, that's why we go to that particular show. Silicon Slopes, it basically, it is a conference where high-tech companies, growing companies, fast-growth companies, if you will as well, have a conference in Salt Lake City. And so these, these companies and, and high-tech companies that support them, like Cisco or Microsoft, are there as well. And so those folks gather and they network, and since there are a lot of startup companies there, they, they consult with each other on how to effectively achieve better growth and have better practices. And so it's an opportunity possibly to go down and talk to some of these fast-growth companies that are nearby and convince them that our lower costs would benefit them as a location, but moreover, they still have access to many of the same types of resources, some of them here locally with Idaho State University and the high-tech infrastructure that we have here, like Biomer Optics, to support their growth here in this location. And they can still actually administer it from Salt Lake City. So, and it's very inexpensive for us to go. It's a day trip. We don't even have to get a hotel. So the result of one of those trade conferences that we've attended in the past is the part of the logistics cluster development that we do, and that's the Fringe Tech Project, which you asked about, the cold storage project. They look at creating 40 jobs, but moreover, what this kind of a project does is, they call it infrastructure. It serves as a type of infrastructure that supports our regional food and ag processing sectors. So, you know, farmers that have produce, potatoes, onions, they can bring those products if they're processed and frozen. Again, it supports that market, and it can be stored there. There needs to be a place to store the frozen potatoes that have been processed, or if they are looking at the fresh market, and that's probably going to be where expansion domestically is going to be, then they can have a space to store those products and prepare them, also handle them and prepare them for distribution to market. So that's what this, this project does. It does get involved in produce handling and processing services for those folks that are willing to engage them in that and contract with them. And this, this project has evolved since it was first announced two years ago, and it's transformed from a, it's still a public warehouse, it's still leased by, you know, by the Palat Square, but it's evolved into rail service because they were getting requests for rail service. So that being said, this is different than a lot of economic development projects that you see. There was a cold storage facility, New Cold was developed out in Burley to service McCains. So now, because McCains was the sole tenant, essentially. That, that project was done and developed and put in place and ready to be located, and it wasn't announced. We didn't know about it until they were sticking shovels in the ground because they had that one single partner that they could work with, and they didn't want everybody to know it either. This project, though, because it's a public warehouse, has to get the word out that they're open for business, that they want to develop this product, this pro, this project, and that they need customers. So that's how we start the process, and so they've been engaging companies and pulling on customers, and they feel they're almost to the point where that they can make the final decision to invest in this project. And so we're looking at, you know, at the very minimum 200,000 square foot facility. They're projecting 280,000 square feet. And again, it'll have handling facilities, and that'll be the, that'll be the delta in the project as to whether or not it's that large or the 200,000 square feet. So they are working on their, well, site design and layout right now. They're working with other, another project to talk about in a second. They are working, well, I want to start at the bottom. They presented at the Idaho Growers and Shippers Association. They met with customers there. Again, we're trying to get customers on board, and as many customers as possibly would be interested because we don't want to end up in a situation where, gee, we shouldn't have built it twice as large. So they've been talking to customers, worked with, met with Bannock Development Directors and folks with Great Rift because with the locations, the airport, and it is... with Greg Riff because with the locations, the airport, and it is in Power County. So, we're working with the partners that are going to be involved. Incentives are being developed or looked at for approval at the state level, as well as in conjunction with the PDA. And then leases are being updated. They aren't going to sign onto a lease until they know they've got the financial packaging in place to forecast that this is going to be a successful project. And so, those processes are all occurring right now, and we're looking at pretty close deadlines, pretty close timeframes. They would like to have the groundbreaking this summer.
So, you've talked lease with them. The question is, where are they at? What's, in the process, where are they at?
They are, they're looking at the TRI, which is the Tax Reimbursement Incentive from Idaho County, from the state of Idaho. But, they need to have that incentive, they need to know what that incentive's going to be before they can finalize.
Before they can finalize all of that.
So, they can't, they really aren't in a position to sign a lease.
But you've been, you've talked lease with them.
Correct.
We've had the discussion on lease issue.
Correct, and lease rate.
That lease will come in front of the city council for approval of site signature. I'm believing. I'm not, I'm getting a yes back there because it's airport property that they will be leasing.
Yeah, it still has to come.
And so, this is a long ways from being done, but it's further down the road than...
Right.
Okay.
Do you have an ETA? I mean, just, I know you're estimating because it's not under your control.
Yeah, I'd like you to see the lease, let's see, April or May.
If they would like to have a, if they would like to have a groundbreaking this summer, it's going to have to be no later than the first part of June to do that.
Oh, yeah.
For a lease to be in front of the city council. So, they've got a lot of work to do on their end to get it there.
Could you explain to me what the incentives you just mentioned that they're looking to get from the state? What exactly are they looking to get from the state?
The tax reimbursement incentive is based on state taxes that are, you know, employment taxes, I think it's sales taxes, and the income taxes from the state. And so, they take a look at what a company's paying in, and then the company pays these taxes in. Before the project gets started, they negotiate up to 30% reimbursement on the total level of those cumulative taxes for a period of up to 15 years for the project. So, it's negotiated, and the levels are based on the wages and benefits and probably the investment as well.
Okay. So, are they approaching the county for any investment, any reductions and anything?
They're a TIF district, and, well, I'm of the mind and the council and the PDAs are of the same mind, that doing, trying to do a TIF and trying to do a tax exemption is revoked.
Okay.
Because it's coming out of the same page.
Okay. And then I have a question. They're looking at creating 40 jobs? Is that what that means?
Right, yeah.
And at what base pay and will those jobs have benefits?
Yes, yeah.
So, what's the minimum wage that they're going to pay those jobs?
I think we were, it has to be above the county, or actually has to be above the city average. So, I think we're looking at $16 an hour right now.
Okay. And then there'll be benefits for the employees?
Right, yeah. Yeah, I think they'll have medical plans that they can participate in and that they'll go pay.
I think, I think to qualify for the TRI, they have to be, they have to have those benefits, and they also have to, they have, they, I know they have to meet the minimum or the minimum average. The part I don't know is do they have to meet the minimum average in Power County because it's within Power County, or the minimum average of the city of Pocatello because it's part of Pocatello?
Do you know that?
And so, it sounds like the average of Pocatello is what John understands.
That's what I just, and I'll double check that. That could very well be what the case is, but I think...
Yeah, we've, it's been explained both ways, and so, John's got to put that figured out.
Yeah, in Power County, that would be $18.
Yeah.
And the 16 or the 18 is the minimum?
Yes.
It's the average wage.
At average, it's the minimum that they could pay.
That they have to pay to get TRI.
And are, do you have any sense of, like, out of those 40, are there much higher-paying jobs included?
There'll be higher paying.
Some, like, management level?
Yeah, but it'll be, it'll be an average.
Okay.
And in reality, the local market is going to dictate that they'd be about that range as well.
Okay.
So, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, because you just said average, but I think what councilwoman was asking is the minimum any worker out there could be paid, depending on which county, would be X amount, or if you pay somebody 300,000, you can pay everybody else 725, average it, and it comes out at 16?
Well, it has to be weighted among the total wages of the project. So, you take, you take all the workers, times there are really wages forward a year, you can add one of those people back in. But if, when you take the total and then you divide it amongst everybody there...
So, it's an, so it is, it's an average, and you can pay many of your people very low and pay a few?
But it's not, but it's not an average of those wages, it's an average of what's paid. So, what it does is it negates any real impact on shifting that number by having one large wage. And then, you know, these people are going to pay a management or supervisor what that wage scale is, and it's, that's not going to shift it that much.
Right, but what I wouldn't like to see is that you have 39 people getting eight bucks an hour and one person getting...
Right, yeah, because of the way it's calculated, that doesn't help them.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Okay. So, the other logistics cluster development project is a unit train development and the infrastructure supporting that, so intermodal and transload developments. Unit train development also supports our regional food and ag processing sectors, but it also can benefit manufacturing as well. And the unit train, to explain what a unit train is, if you take a look, let's see here, may have, may have a better illustration here, I guess. Anyways, for unit train development, you've seen these boxes that sit on the railroad cars that are doubled, stacked, that one piggyback on the other? Those are containers. And a unit train is comprised of containerized freight. And so, that freight, there has to be so many of those cars, and I think 150 is the number that we have total that we need to have for this project. So, those trains are assembled, there are 150 cars, and what happens is Union Pacific comes by and grabs that whole train and takes it to the coast for export. And that's what those containers are for, is for export. Some of them may be used, you know, on the West Coast somewhere, but that's the main idea. Now, the other area, international export, is probably the big growth area opportunity for agriculture in Idaho, or for the nation, because we're pretty much saturated. Believe it or not, we can't eat anymore. So, anyways, so, that's where agriculture has to go for a big expansion in market. They have to go to export, and so, that's why this is of great interest. And so, one of the companies that is participating, and this is a new market, Ta Pei. There's a hay press out at the airport, and they're actually exporting alfalfa to China. And they need to compress it and, you know, make it more feasible to actually ship that by boat to China where they have poor soil for growing alfalfa. And so, to have any kind of dairy industry domestically, they have to have hay. So, these folks also have presented at the Shippers and Growers Association with Frigtech and met with customers there, and we've introduced them to other economic development organizations. Mayor Blad's introduced them to other mayors. They've presented to the PDA as to what their project is. And so, they are working on developing locations, looking at locations for intermodal and transload development, which is where they would assemble these unit trains, lay down the tracks, assemble these trains, and do that shipping. There's other types of what's called manifest shipping that they would handle as well, and that's just car by car bulk, or maybe it's a tank or car type of freight that Union Pacific would be switching for on an individual basis. So, they are continuing to look at sites for their project and look at the various opportunities. Again, there's intermodal, again, like I described, intermodal functions, but there's also these manifest functions. And so, the nice thing about Pocatello is we have multiple places where we can do different, those different types of projects. The airport, but there's multiple yards Union Pacific has that they could do these sorts of projects at. So, we'll continue to work with them.
I guess my question would be, if they have to have 150 cars and they're stacking them too deep, that'd be 300 containers?
Right.
And my assumption would be they want it all assembled at one place because they're, they're really getting away from even stopping between the West Coast and the East Coast. So, this would have to be a pretty sizable yard if you have 150 cars.
You have to have a lot.
And you're loading 300 units on it. What would be the expectation of the schedule? Once a week, every three days?
At least once a week. But I think, I think the schedule that they're looking for could even exceed that, yeah, at least once a week.
I think they're shooting, they want to have, go twice a week, is what he's...
Yeah, that's their goal.
Is their goal is to get twice a week.
But Union Pacific, well, they'll pull it when it's scheduled, but I mean, it's tough. But yeah, that's, the goal is twice, but at very least once.
And do you have to, go ahead. Do you have to get it to a certain place for Union Pacific to put it in their system, or they put it in their system right there?
They'll, the engines will come to the yard where it's at and then look up and...
So, it's its own train to its destination?
Right. Right, and it's like you say, they want to just go coast to coast, so it's got to be right in, right out.
So, it's Portland or Seattle or someplace like that, probably?
We're, I think that's Seattle.
Oh, I thought he was talking Portland is where we're going.
But it could be, you know, you can send freight to Portland as well.
Does this have any interface with or impact on the current, except for tracks, kind of abandoned railroad area, or this would be built completely separate and there'd be no way to kind of...
It would, it would be new construction or current active yards.
So, does that mean there's the potential for somehow collaborating with Union Pacific to use some of the land that they have essentially abandoned?
So, they could use it, for one, any one of, any one of the functions involved, they could use a Union Pacific yard and collaborate with them if that's what fits.
Right, so there is the potential, rather than just having that big kind of dead spot in the middle of town, that it might be able to be...
If they deemed that would be something that would work.
Right.
I mean, there's no, the area you're thinking about, it doesn't have any, an active track or a front or a side door through it.
Right, but I was just thinking, if they're going to have to build something anyway, is there any hope that that big dead spot might somehow collaboratively be repurposed?
Yeah, it has to be.
They are, Jonathan, they are working with Union Pacific. In fact, it's kind of up in the air where we are with it because they are working with Union Pacific, and Union Pacific has asked us to just stay back and let the two of them work together, and then we'll go from there. They have contacted us about some places and where it would be work, but until they come back with the, Union Pacific is good with us, then they may let in.
I guess the other piece that maybe dovetails with this is at the governor's Capitol for a day last summer when he was over in AF. He was talking about something that sounds very similar to this, and his economic development person was talking about efforts direct from the governor's office to the railroad for something that is very similar to this, and then an analogous project up north with whatever railroad is up there. So, I'm just wondering what kind of coordination we have going on or not with, with the governor's efforts so that all the heads are heading in the same direction?
I've met, well, we've met with the governor a couple of times during these visits, and he is just excited, he's thrilled about it. I've met with Tom Keely, his Congress Director, a couple of times about him as well, and that's who that TRI application goes to. So, yeah, they're tuned in and well aware of what's going on.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think it's interesting to note that this shipping is going on now, but it's being trucked to Salt Lake City, and the trains are being built there and then it's going. This project, if it works out the way the tentative plans are, will take 2 million road miles of trucks off our interstate system to and here in Salt Lake City, a year. And that we all know the congestion that we have traveling on our highways primarily because of trucks.
And just the environmental impact of that alone is huge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Some of the projects we're working on, we just had a plastics extrusion project come to us, and we're working on getting them settled, but we haven't fully processed that one. Project Feather is a project that came from Commerce. The ones with names are from Commerce, and the numbers are the ones that we've gotten directly. But Project Feather is a battery manufacturer, has over 1,000 jobs, and they're looking for substantial acreages. I think the 300 acres they were looking for. So, that project is still alive, and we're still mugging Commerce to get us in the mix and get us a site visit on that. Project 1919 is a power equipment manufacturing company. They use equipment that is battery-based. 350 jobs with that project, and we're helping them with sites and building space searches. And Project 1918 is an IT company with about 20 jobs and working with them to get them pipeline of talent with Idaho State University, as well as access to local jobs. Project 1917 is a battery manufacturer, and they're going to create 150 jobs, that's their objective. And we're working with them on site, or actually building a location right now. And so, we've narrowed down the options that they have and got some primary sites that, or primary buildings that they want to locate in. And 1917 is a steel fabricator. That involves 200 jobs, and so, we're working with them on sites to locate that facility. We've also, as I mentioned, we work with lead follow-up, we're doing lead follow-up right now from the SHOT Show and some from last year's Select USA Convention or Conference, I should say, and that's firearms manufacturing companies that do automation, control, steel fabrication, pharmaceuticals, heavy equipment manufacturers. And actually, all of these things are being done here. Pharmaceuticals is something that can be done here, more of a pharmaceutical packaging. So, areas that we want to see more expansion in.
So, if we looked at these leading prospects and we tried to put a percentage chance that we have at attracting them, what would you, you know, I mean, it's one thing to list all these potential things, it's another to say that we're really in the running. What percentage would you put to, what's our chance? 1%, 10%?
Well, it's going to be different for different ones.
Give me a percentage for each of those that you've got.
For the battery, like I say, we're trying to get Commerce to keep us in the mix on the battery manufacturers, so I would give that maybe a 20%, 20%. Power equipment manufacturer, 1919, 80% plus. The IT company, again, 80. The battery manufacturer, 80%. Steel fabricator, 50/50. So, these are all, these are all strong projects we're working on right now. And 90% of the time, actually, these are better than 90%. 90% of the time, the company, they're just a project. These are, these are way past that, so unless something comes along to stop...
So, these are real tangible, decided we're going to relocate, do this, and we're in a position to...
Only one of these is a relocation. See, the thing is, relocation... See, the thing is, relocations are real tricky. We try to avoid them.
But if you're looking at sites or relocating for somewhere...
Well, no, they're expanding.
Okay.
They're expanding and some, I think there's a startup in there. But one of them is 10 jobs from Asia to the United States.
Dan, go ahead. No, go ahead.
So, obviously, because of non-fossil fuel and clean energy and all of that and the huge job growth that's happening, batteries are critical and not just, not just for this country, but frankly, in many overseas countries, they've already committed to going all electric by, you know, probably not within my lifetime, but shortly thereafter. And so, I'm wondering, in these expansions or whatever, what, I mean, is that finally becoming, is clean energy finally becoming part of the potential mix for job growth in this area or are we talking, you know, car batteries for my gas fueled?
Well, it's both. Part of this mix and that's, part of the message here is the energy sector, the battery manufacturing sector, the batteries, power supply sectors is very active, but it's both. It's deployment, it's convenience, people have the ability now to take their power with them and also, it is also, clean energy, the demand for clean energy is driving some of this also.
Thanks.
And the jobs that they're talking about creating, these 80% chances that we have of getting these new businesses in town, are those, are those, are those living wage jobs or are those minimum wage jobs? Do, what have they presented?
They're living wage to, they're lucrative wage jobs.
Okay. Because we don't need a lot of minimum wage, we don't need any more minimum wage jobs in this town.
Especially with an emerging field, the talent is what you're looking at. You really can't describe it as a work force, it's talent base, are going to have advanced skills and training and so they're going to be paid.
And without divulging anything that would be indiscreet, can you give us any update on the conversations you've been having with ISU President Satterly? Because I know one of his focus areas is, you know, creating an environment where Pocatello has the kinds of startups and spinoffs that many university towns across the nation thrive on. And, you know, and he's been very overt about saying, hey, tell us what you need and we will help provide it. So, can you just give us a little sketch of how that's kind of working in?
We've had a couple of meetings with President Satterly about the growth areas and the talent base that he can supply us with. The seed program is the current incubation type program that they have.
Right.
They do a, they do a program, every year they do a competition. So, but in regards to that, have had some brief conversations with him about the entrepreneurship aspect of things, but it hasn't been the main focus. It's, you know, it's been the hot pancakes of how do we, how do we get the talent for the FBI? How do we get the talent for advanced manufacturing and cybersecurity, quite honestly. So, big, big sectors that we work on there.
Great, thanks.
But it did provide input, I was on one of the search committees for the last research and development person. So, they're going to take another swipe, but that's why I expect to be on that committee as well, looking at getting these people in that, get people, get jobs on the ground was the stance that I had. Let's work with somebody that's going to be strong in entrepreneurship.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, I have one, sorry. You know, there's been a lot of conversation about, you know, removing dams and I think in the 2016 Idaho Power kind of state of the corporation, public document had talked about how unreliable water levels in the rivers, you know, could be a factor, et cetera, et cetera. And so, I know that there's a lot, maybe more from up north. You know, the river is pretty important to a lot of ag-related exporting. And so, I'm wondering, you know, what the current buzz might be around, you know, are the salmon going to win and we take out dams, what happens with the low water? I mean, how does that, do projections around what the situations may be with the river tie into, you know, projecting this out more than one year, two year, but I mean, projecting this out and, you know?
I think, I think the dams you're talking about are actually downstream from Idaho and I don't think they're, they're not part of Idaho Power's energy base.
Well, no, I know, I know that, but there's a lot of conversation about whether or not rivers are going to be made more natural or what. And there was a lot of talk about, about how that, depending on what happens with the rivers, it would impact Idaho's ability to export via water, which if, if that were curtailed, then obviously the whole train idea becomes much more critical and important. And I'm just, so I'm just wondering in the conversations that are going on around transport, where that is.
That really hasn't hit the economic development sector so much as far as how it impacts freight.
Okay.
Because right now, discussions...
Are much more about here and now.
Well, yeah, they're about here. We just see what's in the news about the feasibility examinations.
Okay.
So, one thing our housing study team has done, we've developed a website about the housing developments that have been occurring here in both Northgate but also over at Siphon Road, which is New Day now. And we'll get that put up on our website, on the main page and have a news announcement on that here in the next week or so. And what that does, and to back up, we're charged with trying to promote housing development. We did an examination of the data, it would show that we have plenty of sites to put housing units on. We just need to keep encouraging our contractors to build houses and do some spec homes, which we've done. A couple of them have responded. I know one of, one of the developers putting out 50 spec homes this past year, plans on doing the same again. But, I'm going to be a chicken and I'm not going to try to pull up the website, but this is what the front page looks like, it's housing developments information and some well-known sites like Satterfield Development. And take a look at the Bill U Estates, Brookstone Estates are some of the developments that are occurring. And what these are, these are developments. We are getting into the individual lots, that's for the Realtors themselves, but we're trying to portray the image that we have housing that's going on here and that a company looking for a location here, their employees are going to have a place to build if they want to build. There are also lease management agencies, so they know that they can touch base with somebody to find places to lease. And also, we've got contractors on the website as well, those that have websites. So, that, again, that'll be coming out here with a news release and be on our website. Your Fed, we're doing that every year now. We're going to do four expos with these categories that you see here, these career paths for new folks. What that is, is we go to the high schools and have expos where we have the actual companies from these high wage, high demand, high tech careers as well as the related curriculum or related departments from the College of Technology and ISU to demonstrate the training. So, these are hands-on demonstrations to show the students what kind of jobs, what kind of training is there right now and they can come out of high school in one or two years and get into careers that are paying $32,000 to $95,000 a year.
Having been a high school career counselor for a few years and worked with local unions and whatnot to do smaller versions, because I was focused on my high school and my district, I've done these and my question is that all the research demonstrates that you really need to start at least at ninth grade doing interest-based career exploration, guiding kids. I mean, it's, it's a fairly extensive process if you do it right because it is an educational process. And while doing these, you know, short shots grab some kids, it really isn't the best way to do things and it doesn't help with high school retention, graduation rates and it doesn't help with the beyond high school success rate, which ISU was just talking about and it's not very impressive here. So, I'm wondering what conversations you've had with the school district because in my view, supporting the school district on these expos is great, but doing part of what should be the school district's job is perhaps not the wisest decision. So, I'm wondering what kind of conversations you've had with the school districts about using these maybe as anchors and then having them take on the responsibility of actually doing career counseling and education properly.
The collaboration is mainly with the College of Technology and the companies themselves. The school districts are our hosts, but we have, this is in junior highs, so we're starting with seventh grade. And so, they work with their students there. Their guidance departments work to get the students into this and so they see it every year, so it's not a one and done type of thing. And this is different than the career fairs. These are, not just everybody was looking for somebody regardless, these are high wage type of areas. And so, in the process, the career counselors are getting their students into it because of the type of jobs they're generating excitement.
Right.
And so, that's what we're hearing back. The high schools don't do this. This is something that's been done prior to this on an on and off basis strictly with the Department of Labor and the College of Technology.
Right, right.
So, in the first, what we showed the first year was like a 27% increase in interest and knowledge of these fields.
Sure.
As well, and then the second year was 20% increase. And every year, it's going, hopefully it gets less and less and less every year.
Right.
We also, this is open to the public and so some of the parents that come along enroll in the College of Technology.
Yeah.
Well, and that's what I was going to ask because I don't know that targeting 11-year-olds to talk about careers, you know, is, I don't know how fruitful that is because most 11-year-olds aren't even thinking about next Friday, but I was wondering if these are open to the public or just open to the students of this particular school that's hosting and their parents?
Parents, we do, their parents are encouraged to come. Some of the schools have kind of required it and so as well as offering credit for attendance by the students. And let's just say, I haven't seen students be enrolled by the years to this, but I have seen them escorted by the arm, by their parents to get them into these, so.
And is there any data out there, were you done?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there any data out there from ISU or wherever about the actual material follow-through? So, okay, my, I knew nothing about this, so now I have this exponential increase in my information about something, but the real measure of success is how many students who have interest in these areas as a result, interest and knowledge as a result of your efforts, how many of them actually go on to enroll and how many of those actually complete and go out to join the workforce?
This actually hasn't been, I think we only got one year's addition worth that would have completed by now, so that data wouldn't have existed.
And I realize that...
And it's, so we really don't have much data from the College of Technology because they don't have a mechanism to track of all of their enrollees, you know, did you, did you go to the programs? But we do have, and we have a report from, from the first and second years that show, actually the second year's really the best report that we've gotten done of the results from the surveys. We administer a survey before and a survey after to determine what they've learned and what they don't. A lot of this is follow-up with the career counselors.
Right, it sounds like ISU from their strategic plan presentation is, is going to be focusing more on student outcomes and success, so we may be able to get a more direct correlation between your efforts and the kid actually getting a job.
I just have another question before we move on. Where are Pokie, Century and Highland High School? How come we're not doing, how come the College of Technology isn't doing any of these events at our three high schools here in town?
Well, the high schools themselves have a lot of career fairs and a lot of specific industry events that they have. We did one last year that we took an innovative approach by taking it to one of the middle schools and doing the career fair there. So, we always do one every year in Pocatello essentially at one of the high schools and we have done one in Century before and we've done one in Highland. So, we did this at the middle school to see if we can get a head start and have more manageable population, but every year we will do something here. Throughout the rest of southeast Idaho, we're going to alternate, so it's going to be like an every other kind of year thing, which is what we were going to do before because if you think about it, if you went to a high school every year, after the second year, you're really going to see a drop in participation because the students have seen it before. But this way, if we rotated around, students see it twice during their high school years, maybe once through the junior high years, and they're still paying attention to it.
And can I just add one comment to that? The school district does have a thriving CTE program, Career Technical Education Program, so they're already really doing very well in that area.
I appreciate your opinion.
Okay. Thank you very much, John. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks much.
We'll move on to Gen item number six is a TNR grant update. City staff will be available to give an update on proposed trap neuter release program, TNR grant. That was discussed at the September 12, 2019 work session. The legal department staff has reviewed the grant documents and staff will be available to answer council's questions regarding the grant. Staff is also seeking direction from the council whether to apply accept the TRI-TNR grant. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor Blatt and council members. We appreciate the opportunity to meet with you this morning. I'm Ron Knapp, interim director of animal services. As the mayor said, we met with you in September of last year, at which time we presented to you a request to explore the option of looking at a trap neuter and release program through our shelter. We provided you with the information on, a little bit of the background about what the TNR program consisted of and what some of the responsibilities that went along with that program. And we also discussed with you looking at applying for a grant for $50,000 through the Best Friends Animal Society. At the conclusion, we were given the authorization to go ahead and meet with our legal department to have them look at the terms of the grant and also fill out the application. However, we haven't proceeded any further in regards to that. However, we have taken steps to get further information regarding other communities and agencies that have these programs in place. So, I know we provided our new council members with the presentation. So, I thought rather than redo that presentation today, I would, me and our shelter supervisor, Josh Hines, could answer any questions you have, but... Josh Heinz, could answer any questions you have. But we are fortunate today to have Jennifer Atkins, who is with the Best Friends Animal Society here, and she has a brief presentation. I think that may help answer any questions you may have. Before I turn it over to Jennifer, I would just like to say that I'm really proud of our staff. We actually, in 2019, we were able to do some things through education and just being a little bit more proactive in the community and reevaluating our intake procedures. We were able to go from a thirty-one percent euthanasia of our animals in 2018 down to twenty-six percent. So the difference in numbers from 2018 is ten sixty-two, six ninety-seven. That's still a lot of cats, but that's a significant drop, and that's a collective effort of all our staff working together. So we're really proud of that. And that goes to show that if we had somebody that was in that position on a full-time basis and was able to do that community education and outreach, I think that would--our numbers obviously are going to be better, so we're optimistic about that. So I'll go ahead and turn the time over to Jennifer.
Good morning. As Ron said, my name is Jennifer Atkins. I'm with the Best Friends Animal Society. And I do want to start out by saying my shelter outreach team and our regional Mountain West region team and myself came and visited your shelter in December. And I just want to say that you guys have an amazing group of people that are very passionate and very committed to the welfare and the continuation of making Pocatello a great place for the animals living in your community and the people that live in your community. So I was very impressed, and I have really enjoyed working with your team, and I'm excited to continue that work. So I just wanted to keep this really brief, but I wanted to introduce myself. I am the Community Cat Program Outreach Specialist for Best Friends Animal Society. We're a national organization, and we are based in Kanab, Utah. But I'm a remote employee, and I actually am a Boise native. So I live in Boise currently. So you guys do have the added benefit of having somebody local that can kind of pop over here and help kind of boots-on-the-ground with your programming. So, and, you know, as an Idaho native, I am a very passionate Idaho advocate, so really excited to be here. I just wanted to kind of go over the basics of Community Cat Programs, kind of define some of the acronyms. It's a very acronym-heavy program, so I just wanted to clear up any questions of that. And I wanted to give examples of programs in the state that are--that have been launched by Best Friends and what their success rate has been, and just kind of talk about any concerns or questions that you may have. So this map is not an all-inclusive map, but it's the best one that we have for now that shows both our full-scale and our mentorship programs through Best Friends. So it shows-- we like to give this kind of--to show that these programs are being launched all over the country, and they are being successful all over the country. A lot of times, what we hear is, you know, our city or our community is different. And while that is true, with these programs, we do see a lot of the time that we're dealing with the same issues. We have the same concerns. We have the same questions. And we ultimately have the same success of seeing the number of complaints for Community Cats and the issues that go along with it, as well as your euthanasia numbers decrease. So it's estimated that about sixty percent of the animals that are euthanized in our shelters across the country are cats. And nearly three-fourths of all the cats entering in our shelters are being euthanized. On average, twice as many cats come into the shelter as strays compared to relinquished by owners. And that's certainly the case for most animal shelters across the country, including Pocatello. So I just wanted to kind of clear up any acronym confusion, so--because you'll hear a lot of them within the Community Cat Program. So CCP, Community Cat Program, it just kind of envelops pretty much all of the different aspects, which we'll kind of go over. But RTF is Return to Field, which means that we are returning the cats that are relinquished to the shelter, that are program-eligible, back to the community, rather than trying to find adoption resources for them. It kind of goes in hand with TNR, which is Trap Neuter Return. But the difference between those two is that Trap Neuter Return is that we are going out and trapping those cats versus the Return to Field, or SNR is kind of used together, which is Shelter Neuter Return. So we're talking about cats that are relinquished to the shelter as strays. And if they're program-eligible, they will be returned to their community.
So just to understand that clearly, the RTF could be anyone in the community--
Correct.
--bringing in a cat or trapping a cat themselves. It's not like a part of a specific program. It can just be anyone?
Correct. It would be any program-eligible cat. So any cat that is relinquished to the shelter that doesn't show signs of ownership. So this cat's not microchipped, doesn't have a collar, that sort of thing. We don't usually put temperament into that, because--and we'll kind of go over that a little bit in-depth. But typically, these are cats that are already living outdoors, and they are mistaken as somebody's missing cat. But we're seeing that most of the time, these cats are not actually missing. They're either free-roaming cats that live in the area, or they are owned cats that don't have identification. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Yeah. So Best Friends put out a national survey in 2014, asking communities across the country what they would like to do about the free-roaming cat population. And there were three different options: sterilize and vaccinate the healthy cats, and return them to where they're captured; impound the stray cats, and followed by lethal injection of any cats that are not adoptable; or do nothing and let the problem continue. Sixty-eight percent of those that answered this survey said that they would rather see some type of TNR, where we are going in and sterilizing these cats, returning them back to their community, rather than doing nothing or euthanizing the cats that are not adoptable. So typically, what we're doing when we--when a cat comes into the shelter, regardless of if it is brought in by a public member, or it's brought in by somebody at the shelter that's going out and trapping these cats, how they get there is all kind of the same, what we do with them once they are at the shelter. So what we're looking at is that the cats enter the shelter, we determine their eligibility for return, and these eligible cats are fixed. They're vaccinated for rabies and for feline distemper. Typically, they are notched in the ear to identify that they have been through the program and that they are now fixed and vaccinated. And then they are returned to the location where they were trapped or where they were found. And then we use those as kind of red-flag cats to go out and do targeted TNR when we know that there's a problem. If there's more than one cat coming in from a certain area, usually we can guess that that is probably a colony of cats that is there, and we can go in and do a targeted TNR where we fix the entire colony. And then in that, we also will mitigate any nuisance issues with these cats. And our shelter outreach program has already done a little bit of training with your animal control officers on that conflict mitigation. And we will continue to provide support on how to tackle those nuisance calls in the future. So I wanted to outline a pilot Community Cat Program that began in 2017 in Boise, Idaho. I was actually the Community Cat Program Coordinator through Idaho Humane Society before being hired by Best Friends, but Best Friends did offer a similar grant to what we are offering the city of Pocatello, and to go ahead and launch this program. So at the baseline year was 2016, and they had a save rate of fifty-six point one percent for their cats. Now, last year, they've been doing the program for, you know, from 2017 is when it was launched in July, so they've been doing it for about two and a half years now. And now they're at an eighty-five point seven percent save rate for their cats. Their intake of cats also dropped off--dropped by six hundred and sixteen cats from that baseline year of 2016 to 2018. It also opened up resources for them to begin barn cat programs and a whisker program, which is their women inmate social kitty retreat, where they partnered with the local prison to do a foster-based program for the women inmates, where they would foster neonadals, or sick cats, or cats that had had orthopedic surgeries, so that they were continuing to provide lifesaving options for the cats in their community. Idaho Falls is, you know, a neighbor of yours, and also began a TNR/SNR program in April of 2018. Their baseline year was not looking great. They were at a forty-two point four percent save rate for their cats. Last year, they reached the national benchmark of ninety percent save rate, so they are now considered no-kill for their cats in their community. And their intake dropped by seven hundred and eighty-four cats by doing this program as well. And like I said, through these programs, what we're seeing is that we're--what they morph into is doing more than just that TNR or that Return to Field aspect, is that it frees up resources to provide other lifesaving programs for the cats in your community, such as barn cat programs, where cats that aren't typically adoptable but are also not program-eligible to be returned to field can be adopted out as working cats for folks that want natural pest control, or, you know, just a barn cat, and other kind of foster programs like the social inmate program or neonatal programs. What we're seeing is across the board that these programs become more than just a Community Cat Program and really become cat lifesaving programs. So the common concerns that we have for these programs is if these strays are being, you know, brought in by the public to hopefully find their owner, how will owners find them if we are just putting them right back where they came from? Well, we do know that the return-to-owner rate is only about two percent through our shelters. So they actually have a better chance of finding their way home if they are returned to the community where they were found. It also reduces euthanasia and the need for space, kennel space, in your shelter. And then you have more opportunities for positive outcomes for the cats that are not program-eligible, that truly do need your adoption resources through your shelter. What we're doing is we're putting cats back that are healthy and in good condition. We know that these cats are thriving in their environment, that they have food and water and shelter, because they're coming to us, and we are assessing their well-being at time of intake. So we are not talking about putting back hoarding cases. We are not talking about putting back cats that are clearly being abused, or have been abandoned and are not being well-cared-for, or are not making it on their own. We're talking about cats that are clearly thriving in the environment in which they were found. The other question is, shouldn't we adopt out the friendly cats that come into us as strays? Well, our goal is to have space to hold them for adoption, but currently, we euthanize them to make room for the new cats that are continuing to arrive. And so it's a vicious cycle of trying to make room for the cats that are flooding into the shelter. And the whole point of the Community Cat Programs is that these cats already have a home. They already are thriving. A lot of times, these cats are being cared for by somebody in the community, if not more than one person, and they're going around their neighborhood and trick-or-treating between several caregivers. Or they are actually an owned cat that somehow got out and really actually knows her way around the neighborhood and was essentially kidnapped from her neighborhood because somebody thought they were doing the right thing by saying, "This cat's lost," which we now know that cats aren't actually most of the time lost. And this creates more space and time to hold the other cats that are not program-eligible, who cannot be returned, and who truly do need your adoption services. Those are owner-surrendered cats of people that cannot care for their cats anymore, declawed cats, special-needs cats, those types of things, and kittens, of course, that are too young to be returned to field. The other question is the nuisance and the wildlife considerations and the disease control. We all want less cats free-roaming in the community, and this is the humane option to do so. This reduces colonies over time. Yes, the cats will eventually die of natural causes. We do also have concerns of what happens to these cats if they, you know, are hit by a car, or somebody is, you know, abusing them. But again, the risk of that versus the risk of them dying by lethal injection in your shelter, that outweighs that risk. And most of the time, these cats are being cared for, and they are thriving in that community. We know that the trap-and-remove methods that we have done for many, many years have not worked, because we still have free-roaming cats in our community that are continuing to procreate and continuing to cause problems. And ignoring that problem won't make it go away. Doing nothing also does not provide the public health benefits of vaccinating these cats for rabies and feline distemper. So when we're putting back cats that are not procreating and they're not spreading disease, we're actually increasing the health of the existing colonies, and then they will die off eventually as the years go on. So we are, in essence, reducing the amount of cats that are free-roaming in your community. So I just wanted to put a little plug for our resource page on our website. It's resources.bestfriends.org. You can just find the--that's the whole link for the Community Cat Program, but we kind of have a whole soup-to-nuts handbook on how to implement these programs and make them successful. And my role specifically is to provide that ongoing outreach and support to your shelter, if that program is implemented through us, and the added benefit of me being able to kind of pop down here and be boots-on-the-ground help for your shelter to meet those goals that we'll set in place through, you know, the grant, and try to save--close your lifesaving gap for cats. I think this is just continuing talking about those resources that I have available. And that is--that's all I have on that. So I'll just kind of open it up to any questions or concerns.
Can you go back to your previous slide?
Yeah.
I just had a question where you said that the trap-neuter-return resulted in reductions at six animal shelters, but it seemed like you had a lot more than that on your map of the United States.
Oh, yeah. So that is actually--and I have a link to it in the actual presentation, but that's actually a study where they went in and studied six particular shelters for that particular research study. So that's just the title of that particular study.
So it might be--
But yes, we do have--
--at other ones, too.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, we do have them all over the country that are more than just six. I honestly can't tell you the number because of--because we have so many going on. I don't know the exact number between our full-scale programs, where we actually embed Best Friends staff, versus our mentorships, which is like what we are offering Pocatello, where they are providing the staff person, and it's a shelter program and not a Best Friends program.
But the data does show reductions at all of those?
Yes.
But this is one study. Okay.
Yeah, this is just one study that I had available for resources.
But there aren't any where they've done it and it hasn't, that you're aware of?
Not that we're aware of. We have seen success in every city that has launched Community Cat Programs, either through us at some capacity, full-scale versus mentorships, or even cities that have done this on their own.
A statement and then a question. I know through Fish and Game that when coyotes are hunted and really work to reduce population, population off-- population often explodes because there's a tendency genetically for them to reproduce more dramatically. The size of the litter they have and, and, and the time, amount of pregnancies in a year goes up. Um, so I understand that there can be, um, antithetical information, that you'd think if you're killing them, you're getting rid of them, but in often, in instances, when you, uh, put animals into a mix and you don't reduce the population, that the population then monitors itself better.
Yes.
And I think that's what you're saying with this.
Yes, that's correct.
Uh, so, that statement, if there is dramatic success, like you have said, you know, a number of reductions, uh, this requires us to scale up for a while. Does that scaling up then, uh, get meant by a return that allows us then to, to, uh, look at other avenues of using our employees and stuff? Is that something you've experienced? You know, in other words, if you're not taking in a thousand cats a year, you have other things you can do with the, with your time?
Yes, and that is, that is what we see overwhelmingly as these programs continue, is that the need for, uh, restructuring within your shelter for, you know, you now have a staff person that used to spend X amount of hours per week euthanizing animals, they can now be adoption counselors or, um, or, uh, foster coordinators, uh, volunteer coordinators. Um, so we're seeing a reallocation of those services that, that the shelter can provide and the positions that are, um, within the shelters. So, yes, it, we, we overwhelmingly do see these, um, programs and this job specifically as, you know, the community cat program coordinator, um, over time, adapting into more of a life-saving coordinator and facilitating a lot of different programming within the shelter.
So, if you have somebody that is designated to do the trapping and there's less animals to trap, then they have other time for something else as well?
Yes, yes.
Kind of following along on that, and I, I might have, uh, be misremembering or have misread, but I, I think in something I read around this, um, very recently, that initially it appeared that there would be at least an additional part-time staff person needed, if not a full-time person. And, um, and so, kind of following that train of thought, um, would it hold true then that if for N-years, based on the research you've done, it appeared that the city would have to make a financial commitment to an additional employee, um, at, at what point then could that position actually tail off because it could be absorbed by others? And I, and, um, two things that I hope aren't being misunderstood. One, I, I have adopted so many animals from shelters and so forth that, that I'm not, um, I'm, I'm very pro-animal, um, but I'm also very pro, you know, responsible use of taxpayer money and so forth and so on. Um, and so, you know, I don't, I don't, and I also don't want it to be perceived that I'm heartless by saying, "Well, we'll hire somebody for five years and then say so long, thanks so much, we're cutting you loose", you know? I mean, but I think these are realistic questions.
Yeah, for sure, and, um, I, I'll, I'll kind of pass it back to, um, Ron and Josh to, 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 um, put their, give their input. Um, but yes, I, I think it's fair to say that, um, that moving forward with these programs and, and the success of these programs, um, those, that job can be either absorbed by, by someone or, or changed, um, in the future. I, I don't, I don't know that I could give a, um, year estimate of that, but I do think it's, it's something that, um, each year as the program continues and, and your numbers fluctuate, um, that it can be considered and, and see where those resources are actually needed at that time.
So, in my, uh, estimation of costs on the previous, uh, presentation we gave you, that is for a, uh, full-time kennel staff position. We, we currently have four full-time and two part-time positions, and, uh, me and Josh looked at it very closely because our first thought was is to see if we could actually run this program without increasing our staff and, and, uh, quite frankly, we weren't even able to look at it from a perspective of using our staff on a, a half-time basis and ask for a, a half-time position. Um, I mean, it's, it's no secret to anybody here that our, our city continues to grow and, and our, our needs and demands are also growing, so, uh, we're, we're in a position now where, uh, the staff that we have is, is, is having some difficulties meeting the responsibilities that we have now, so if I, if I had a concern about this program, it would be that, uh, we would need to have a dedicated person to be able to run this program in addition to what our current levels are right now. Uh, I would not even want to consider looking at this program at this time if we weren't able to, uh, get that commitment because I just don't see how we could make it successfully work and meet those requirements. So, uh, I, I do support this, but that is, that is a concern to me, is, is our staff.
So, I guess I have a question. You've got this down for one, um, you said one full-time kennel staff?
Correct.
I'm assuming you would need another person that is running the traps and stuff like that as well, or no?
No, this, this position would cover that. That person would be responsible for setting up those traps, uh, and that's a process where they would actually do that the day before and then the following days when they would bring those in, or later, it could be the same day, I guess. They would set those, they would set those up and they would be responsible for picking those up and, uh, either bringing those to our shelter, but ideally, we would take them from that location and hopefully take them to the person who would be doing the, uh, neuters on those cats and then taking them back from that location as well.
So, we wouldn't be holding these cats over a day or two before we release them back into their?
That's correct. That's why we, that's why we chose the trap, trap release rather than the, uh, RTF, so we can send somebody out there, they would, they would trap them, know where they're picking them up from, transport them to where they need to transport them, and then transport them back. Uh, that person would also be responsible for public outreach, so they would go out to the public and let them, the public know that, "Hey, this is what we're going to be doing, uh, just a heads-up, this is why it works." I mean, it's not just they trap cats and return them, that's not it. It's, it's a whole position where they, they're educating the, the public as well, and that's where, that's where Jennifer would come in for that training because that's essentially what she does, right? So, that's what this, this position would entail, and we wrote it as a kennel staff position is where we wrote it.
Can I build on your question?
Sure.
For a second? Do you see, based on what you were saying, Jennifer, um, that over time, that position then would, uh, kind of transition into some of the things that you were saying, I think, more of a life-saving cat counselor kind of, I can't remember your exact terminology.
Yes, I think I said facilitator of life-saving or, but it, and it kind of depends on each individual shelter what they want that to look like. Um, and so sometimes, yes, the position becomes, um, a different position, sometimes it becomes a volunteer position. Um, it just kind of depends on each shelter's individual needs and what they budget for and what they, they feel is appropriate at, at, you know, each.
But I guess what I'm asking is do you all agree that the level that we would be at at the beginning for this person would eventually drop off?
I don't think it would.
Well, I think we'd have more opportunity to use that position for other things.
It's never gonna go away.
It's not gonna go away.
Right.
But they would, he's, like, eventually transition to some other duties as well?
Yes, I spoke with the manager of Idaho Falls and one of the things that she told me was is that, over the years, the, the, the program has allowed them to use that position, uh, to, to, to benefit other areas such as the, the public education, but there are times when that position is, is freed up of responsibilities and is able to do other things that would benefit their shelter in addition to that, so, um, but that's taken them several years to get to that point where they were able to do that, so I, I, I wouldn't anticipate that same thing we're gonna see in, in the first couple of years of.
Yeah.
But not having.
Well, and even after their time is freed up a little bit, it's, it's not gonna be like fifty percent or seventy-five percent of their time is freed up, it's just gonna be a little bit. So, there's always gonna be a cost.
Well, and you gotta understand, I mean, we all talked about the city's gonna grow, right? So, as the city grows, there's, could be more populations going to pop up, so essentially, as we grow, this, this, this position would continue as the city grows, right? So.
So, Jennifer, I'm gonna change gears a little bit on here, I'm looking at this here and it says, "For the TNR program, there's a requirement of six hundred cats to be trapped, neutered, and released. What happens if we hit five ninety-eight?"
We take that into consideration and we're, we're not gonna ask for the money back or, or penalize you for, for those cases. Um, we, we make those goals and, and, um, I was kind of discussing with Ron a little bit earlier, um, as we continue to grow these programs, we are seeing that having those specific numbers, um, for surgeries doesn't necessarily, um, tell us our, our life-saving impact overall, and so we are actually kind of shifting more towards just trying to help you close your overall life-saving gap and get to a certain percentage of life, lives saved, um, in your cat population. Um, and that six hundred is, um, based on numbers that we had, um, previously, so, um, from, I believe, two thousand eighteen, um, once we write this particular MOU for this grant, if it's accepted, um, we will be using numbers based on two thousand nineteen, which will be different, um, because your intake has decreased, um, so your, your life-saving gap has actually decreased and will be very attainable, um, from what, from what we have already seen. Um, you guys have a very small life-saving gap, um, of cats that we, we feel confident that you can reach that goal.
And if we come close, you're, you work with us?
Yes, yeah, we're, yes, we're not going to ask for the money back or, or penalize you in any way if, if you come close to those, to those goals. And part of my job, um, as the outreach specialist is to check in monthly with your program coordinator and make sure that we are, um, addressing any issues or concerns that come up, um, while the program is happening, rather than get to the end of the grant cycle and go, "Oh, my gosh, we're fifty cats short of our goal", um, so that we're addressing these, these issues as they come up incrementally.
You don't just sort of leave us alone?
Yeah, no, and, and, um, I think you guys also have the benefit of having Idaho Falls so close, um, as, as, um, kind of a mentor in this as well, um, to bounce ideas and questions off of, but, um, my whole goal as a outreach specialist is to not reinvent the wheel and, um, really talk through all of the issues that come up as they're happening, not, and be proactive about meeting our goals rather than, uh, reactive once we go, "Oh, my gosh, we're not gonna meet our goal." Um, so, my priority is to make sure that we are hitting those, those goals as, as the program continues.
Ron, in the estimated cost you put in here, you have forty-five thousand dollars for veterinary care and external. We have since added a vet technician, I believe, out there. Would those costs be more internalized than what was projected here now because of that addition?
Actually, it would not because that vet tech wouldn't really be able to do anything to assist in that procedure. Our, our volunteer vet that we have that comes in now is just focused on taking care of our, our own cats that we get normally, so any additional cats that we would trap would have to be outsourced to somebody outside of our shelter, so that would, that would not involve our vet tech.
But you still have vets online that will do this at a reduced rate?
Well, that's, that's part of the, that's part of the process, is once we, uh, get this program, if it was, if we were given the authorization, we would have to reach out and, uh, contact our resources here in the community to see who would be willing to participate in that and, uh, get their. We had spoke, we previously spoke to, uh, and there are several vets that are, are willing to do that. We just haven't spoke numbers because we have, we, we haven't got a dedicated number on yet.
So, then where did this forty-five thousand dollar number come from then?
That, that was based on the information that I was provided by, by Idaho Falls and by the Idaho Humane Society, based on their, uh, numbers from the same responsibilities as the number of cats that they had to, uh, trap and, and neuter and release back into the community, and they're working with the different, uh, vets in their towns. So, I mean, that, that number, that number could fluctuate a little bit, but from what I gathered from their, from the data they provided me, it was pretty consistent, so I, I was pretty comfortable in that number. And I also looked at what our costs were, uh, to, to do that, both through our volunteer vet and what the costs were that were associated through, uh, the different vets here in town. I mean, there is a little bit of a, uh, there's a little bit difference in the numbers, you know, from one vet to another, but they were, overall, from the five or six here in, in our community and, and generally, they were pretty consistent, so we were able to look at those costs and factor in what, what it would be at.
I think, um, something that relates to that is, um, and I'm most familiar with Friends of the Animal Shelter, um, in, in terms of the inner workings, but, um, but I know that, um, that organization provides a significant amount of support currently for adopting cats out at reduced rates.
Right.
If we have fewer cats because we're releasing cats, so we have fewer cats that need to be subsidized for adoption, um, and for, uh, getting fixed, it, it's conceivable, depending on board decision, that some of the support that currently goes to supporting cats being adopted out could actually go to support the released cats being neutered. I mean, they're, so, so, uh, you know, some of that cost might be able to be subsidized through whatever legal mechanism is required.
Are you, are you talking about our volunteer vet that's, that's doing our, our fixing now?
No, 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 I'm talking about the fact now that the Friends of the Animal Shelter subsidize cat adoptions for some number of months.
Right, right.
Um, and so I'm thinking if we, if we're reducing numbers overall, that ought to have at least some impact on the number of cats that we have that we're trying to adopt out.
Right.
And therefore, some of the money that the Friends is now spending to subsidize adoptions might be able to be shifted to help support neutering and spaying for the cats that are then being released.
Right. I, I haven't spoken with them specifically about that. I mean, I would tell you that they've been very supportive. We wouldn't be able to do what we do without their help, and I'm sure that they would be willing to, to look at that. Keep in mind that a, a good majority of the cats that we are talking about are the, are the feral cats, ones that, that are not adoptable, so, uh, that being said, I, I think that, you know, it's, over time, we would, we would be able to answer that better than now. I think we're still gonna have a, we're gonna have numbers of, uh, cats coming in on intakes that are adoptable, cats that we're still gonna have to deal with. We're, we're reducing the reproduction of cats in, in our community by this program, but we're still gonna have to deal with the, the intakes that we normally get, so, um, we may be, we may be still tasked with, you know, that, at least initially.
Yeah, but at least there's the potential there regardless of whether or not my logic is sound.
Right.
There's a potential because there is an organization that is working very hard, and there are others, too. I'm just not as familiar, um, with, with the inner workings of Bannock Humane and Paws and the Cat Rescue Lady and, you know, all, all of the others. Um, so, so there may be the opportunity, um, you know, to reduce the bottom line to the city.
I, I think you're actually gonna reduce the number of intakes on domestic cats, 'cause I don't think mama cat really goes out and says, "Oh, I'm not gonna go with you" to a feral cat, you know? So, I think we'll reduce the number of pregnancies to a degree.
Well, that, and that's essentially what we're trying to do, is, is getting, putting them back.
Domestic cats will not be impregnated by wildcat.
Right.
And maybe we won't have these huge kitten influxes, many of which are not coming from owners. They're, they are in fact coming from, from the feral cats that might not be adoptable They are, in fact, coming from the feral cats that might not be adoptable themselves as parents, but their offspring is, in fact, adoptable. And if we can drop that, then we can, there's the potential for organizations to choose to reallocate their support dollars.
Okay, we had a question by Councilor.
Well, the bottom line here is you're looking for permission to accept the grant, right? Do we have a definition of exactly what this is going to be at this point? When this was first proposed to us, we had one proposal, but we actually filed for it with something totally different. So where are we today?
I'm sure if I understand that.
Well, the initial proposal we were given was for one program, but then when we actually, the council actually approved the application, it was for a different program, because we got the wrong paperwork, as I remember.
Correct.
So where are we at on what we're trying to do?
And that was in?
Right. Actually, the difference from the first grant versus this one was is that there was money through Rachel Ray, and that was a more open and competitive grant, and that money was not as easy to obtain. And so Best Friends said, look, we can give you exactly the same thing, but you don't have to compete against all these other organizations and cities. We have that money earmarked for you. So really, the only difference was is just we went from Rachel Ray to the Best Friends.
National Community Cat Program.
I'm sorry. So.
But not having to compete, that that's guaranteed.
Yeah, but the requirements and basically everything that they were asking us to do was not any different. The only difference was is who we were getting the money from and accepting that grant.
And that's all still available?
Yes, the $50,000 is still earmarked for the city of Pocatello.
So I guess part of the discussion then, or anticipation, needs to be what the timeline would be to get the grant application in, get it approved, and then see when the implementation stage comes. Right now, we have not budgeted this amount in this year's budget, but on October 1st, then it would become available, you know. Or we could do a budget amendment, but I don't know that we're set up to do that. That's further discussion. So what's your timeline, your thinking with us in an application, getting it all set up?
So there would be no application, because that money is already earmarked for Pocatello. So it would just be us drafting up an MOU and outlining what the goals of the program would be. It would be for a calendar year of when the program starts versus when it finishes, so 12 consecutive months. Our funding is coming from our fiscal year '20, so that did, so we are already done with our first quarter of our budget. So it would, that money is budgeted through us for this fiscal year.
So as soon as we apply and have everything lined up, we can go ahead, if we have dollars dedicated.
Yeah, so it typically takes a couple of weeks for us to pass the MOU back and forth to make sure everybody is in agreement over the conditions of the grant and get that signed and get a check out, too.
In further comment, I think we're coming into, the sooner we get started on this, the better we are.
Yes.
Because the exponential growth of the cat population could be curtailed this year, rather than waiting and being passed the prime season to do this.
Yeah, and that's our goal, too, is that we want to get these things started as soon as possible, because we know that kitten season is coming. And so as, you know, the sooner that we can implement the program and get you guys off the ground, the better for all of us.
And the initial grant is for $50,000?
Correct.
Okay. So of that $114,000 that's in this budget, we would be expected to cover the $64,000 differential. So that would have to take us to some sort of adjustment in our budget.
Yes.
Okay.
Along with that, Ron, have you talked to finance about where that $64,000 could come from?
I have not.
All right. Thank you very much for coming and presenting to us. We've got our clarification meeting next week, where we can hopefully get some of those additional questions answered, and we can think about whether we have any further questions, and we'll reach out to you if we do. But thank you very much for the presentation.
I just wanted to thank you, Ron, for all your efforts. I'm not sure whether it was on your bucket list to be the director of an animal shelter before you retired, but whether it was or not, I really appreciate, and I know only a fraction of what you've done, but I know you've really done a lot of work on getting contracts clarified and updated and paperwork and stuff, administrative, that's completely out of date, organized, and I know Josh has helped you with that.
He does a lot.
And I also really appreciate, and I suspect it comes from the reality of your law enforcement experience, that behind virtually every problem in the world are human beings. And so your outreach and your acknowledgement and embracing the fact that the cats are just doing their cat thing, and we created the problem we're faced with, and the work you've done around that, too. And I really appreciate it and admire the effort that you've made.
Well, thank you. It's been fun to work with the staff. They're a good group of people. It's all of us working together. We've been able to do the things that we've done, so.
Yes, thank you very much. I think we all feel the same way about that, when you go those sentiments. So thank you very much. And with that, we will move to our next agenda item, which is the Police Department Vehicles Lease Proposal. Police Department staff will be available to discuss the proposed lease purchase of 10 fully equipped vehicles through Bancorp, and they are seeking guidance to lease the vehicles as a sole source provider.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Roger Shine, the Chief of Police for Pocatello Police Department. Along with me at the table is Captain Cliff Kelly. He is over our Patrol Division, and Tom Kirkman, who brought Tom, he's from Fleet, so to answer any questions on the Fleet and the things. This is just a, this is going to be our presentation in reference to leasing 10 vehicles from the Bancorp. This is a continuing conversation that we've had from, I believe it's been over a year, we've been talking to the council in reference to this. And this is a way that we went back to the drawing board after the last meeting that we had, and we were able to work within the confines of our budget. The money that we are seeking to spend is within our budget right now, our existing budget, and it would be a way to get to our goal of having that car per officer fully equipped, turnkey, ready to go. And it's a little more quicker, a little more efficient way of doing it within the confines of our budget. So with that, I will turn the time over to Captain Kelly for his powerful presentation.
Good afternoon, council. And as Chief said, we have a goal in our five-year plan in the red there, continue adding vehicles to our fleet to reach car per officer. And the genesis of that, well, let's talk about where we are. And we have 61 patrol officers. Currently, we're authorized 51 vehicles, and I'd like to thank council for your support in late last budget year approving us to get 12 additional vehicles to get us closer to that goal. We're still waiting to get a few of those built, but that allows us to get within reach of that goal where we sit today. And we need, in order to reach our goal, to have each officer have their own car, we need 10 additional vehicles. Now, to go back a little bit, in the genesis of the car per officer for the city of Pocatello, there's some history. Back in June of 2012, when we had the Charlotte Fire, we had to call out just about everybody in the department that was on duty, which, we had plenty of officers, we just didn't have enough vehicles to get them where they needed to go. Because we were operating under a Fleet program at that time, and all of the cars that were out with the shifts that were there, and the first people that got there, the reinforcements that came in weren't able to efficiently get where they needed to go. And that came up as we debriefed that, and that started our, us really looking towards getting the car per officer, so we can respond to things in a more efficient manner and be of better service to the community. Along with that, we have the barricaded subject incident on Navajo, where we had, again, we had the resources to bring, but we had to call a SWAT team, and they had to come to the station to get their gear, to get out to the scene, which that caused a 20 to 60-minute delay in them getting there to help resolve that situation. You know, and again, hospital way, we had another suicidal subject with a handgun in the parking lot. And this parking lot was adjacent to the main entrance, so I mean, it was a big deal up at the hospital if he was able to get inside. And where we were able to coordinate off and take care of it for a period of time, our SWAT personnel were delayed, because, again, they had to come to the station to get their gear. So, and again, we can go through a bunch of different calls that we've had where a car per officer would benefit us greatly. And another is this 1900 West Quinn, where we were chasing somebody who had just stabbed another citizen, and they barricaded themselves, and not their own trailer, in somebody else's trailer, and we had to take care of that situation. And we could do it in a more efficient manner. So these are things that have led us to put that in our five-year plan, to have a car per officer. And as I said before, council granted our request to add 12 additional vehicles to our fleet with year-end salary savings, and we really appreciate that. That's getting us closer to our goal. And a few other reasons that we can, that we are working towards our car per officer goal, and as we've said before, it's more efficient than having a motor pool. And officers are able to take their equipment home on their off time and have their vehicle set up, so they can respond at a moment's notice, which makes them a better service, gives better service to the community. And there are also, if we have critical incidents, which we do, I've just gone through a few of those, we don't know when those are going to come up. We don't know who's going to be on duty, and we have to call people in for those things regularly. And if they're able to have their resources and their equipment with them, we're able to take care of those things a lot more efficiently. Another reason for car per officer, it's more cost effective for us in the long run. With the current fleet that we have of 41 vehicles, doing the math, and we base it off about, we drive about 503, 504,000 miles per year as a police department on the streets. And that puts wear and tear on the vehicle. So we have 41 now, and that averages out, we have to replace a vehicle about every seven years. And getting a car per officer is going to drop the mileage significantly on each car. So once we obtain our goal, car per officer, we're figuring that the average will be about 12 years that we would get out of each vehicle. And, you know, and based on time, value, money, okay, it's more cost effective to purchase all the vehicles in earlier years, when you have a big purchase, rather than incrementally year after year, because of inflation, things like that. Because your buying power now is better than it would be five years from now. And here's just a chart on the mileage. As you can see, when we had 25 vehicles in the fleet, we were putting 20,000 miles per vehicle per year. As we move to 61, as we get 61 vehicles, and we're still based on the 504,000 miles that we drive per year, we drop that all the way down to 8,000 miles per year. So that shows how we can extend the life of our vehicles. Because we all look at wear and tear on vehicles as the mileage we put on. And right now, we have a goal, when we're between 100 and 120,000 miles on a vehicle, it's due for rotation to a new vehicle. And then, that's just a chart that illustrates the number of years we can get out of a vehicle. Some other reasons that I think are good, that help us to further the values and goals of the city. We, officers take their vehicles home, there's higher visibility in their neighborhoods, which results in crime deterrence in those neighborhoods. Because I know, just as a police officer, if I see, if I'm driving in the neighborhood and I see a police car parked there, I notice it. But I know also that other people who are entering that neighborhood notice it. They know where the officers are, and I think it's just a, it gives a general sense to the community of safety, because you kind of know who you can rely on in that neighborhood. And another thing that it helps with with us is having a car per officer, having your own office as a patrol officer, that you don't have to share with anybody else. That assists us in the recruitment and retention of officers. And it's a pretty big deal when we're bringing people in, and we have lost officers in the past that have been exploring, coming to work for us, but when we had Fleet and then another agency they were looking at, had a car per officer where they were guaranteed they'd have their own office, that they could go around in. So that brings us to how do we acquire 10 more fully equipped vehicles at one time? And we use a lease purchase option to finance the cost of the vehicles, the equipment, and the outfitting. And it's all in one package, and we've been in contact with the Bancorp, and they provide that funding. They're the bank, and they also have the connections with the other entities, with the dealership, with the outfitting companies, and with the equipment companies, to put it all in one package and finance it. And the term of the finance is five years, but the initial payment would be paid this year, with four subsequent payments over the next four years. So one of the big things that, it's called a lease purchase, but one of the big things that's different between a traditional lease and this, is we will own the vehicles at the end of the finance term. For, I think, the way it's structured, at the end of the term, it's a dollar per vehicle, and that, we would own them at the end of that term. So this is what Bancorp is able to complete for us, okay? They provide the financing, they acquire the vehicles, they acquire the equipment, the equipment. They'll ensure that the outfitting is complete, and they will deliver the vehicles to us complete as a turnkey service. And we talked about that in last year, when we acquired the other 10 vehicles. They're going to come to us ready to go, ready to go out on the street.
Computers, everything.
Yeah.
Computers, everything.
Yes. They won't have any delay to be outfitted or anything like that, once they reach our doorstep here. So, that's a big, big selling point. Here's the cost. The cost of 10 vehicles over the five years, okay, is $144,300 per year, okay, beginning this year and for the next four years. And that's for 10 fully-equipped vehicles. So, the total cost, okay, to the city over the life of the term is $721,500. Now, when you, as I talked about the time, value of money, if we're, if we figure $65,000, which is about what a fully-equipped vehicle is, and these vehicles, just so you know, they're F-150 pickups. And I don't think I mentioned that before, but they're about, with all the equipment and everything, we're talking about $65,000 per vehicle. And then, it's just broken up into chunks. But if you take that $65,000 and project it and get them, say, we get two this year, two next year, and then at the end of the five years, we get two, it's pretty much a wash between that and what it costs to finance this, these vehicles for this time. So, what we're asking for guidance on, besides whether we, we can, as the chief said, we can take care of this cost within our current budget that we have, what we have budgeted for vehicles. And then, we still have some left in that line item where we can also take care of our rotations of vehicles that are up to be rotated out. So, I realize we're tying up a certain amount of money for four years, but we, we're able to handle that within that line item. And getting them on the street, that will get us to that goal of car per officer. And the other thing is, is we're looking to have Bancorp be the sole source provider. And I know you can't make a decision on that, you know, in this meeting, but we'd just like to see if we move forward with this.
So, just a few things. We've, in last year with those other vehicles, that was within the confines of our 19 budget. Generally, we budget between $250,000 and $300,000 a year for vehicles. So, that's what we, that's been our history. That's what we've planned on year after year after year. So, you know, in Cappy Kelly's presentation, what does it mean, you know, what do those calls for service mean to you in layman's terms? That means when we have a critical incident happen in the city, we have to dedicate a lot of resources and manpower to that, to make sure that the community is safe. But meanwhile, back in the city, there's still accidents, people go through mental health crises, domestic violence going on, and we have to respond to those calls for services as those happen. So, what we'd be able to do is instead of having the officers come from their house to the station and try to scurry to find a vehicle and gather all their equipment, load all their equipment in their vehicle, and then go out on the street to the domestic, they could just go straight from their residence to that and implement them immediately instead of having that delay in that response. So, and Cappy Kelly mentioned that it's used as a recruiting tool. That's absolutely 100% correct. We are the only agency after, this was a question that was posed by the council last time, we're one of the only agencies on the I-15 corridor that does not have a car per officer. That's all the way down from St. George all the way to Rexburg and the DVA is from I-15 corridor. But we did the research there on that. Bancorp is a national company, so if there's any questions about Bancorp, they deal with the US Secret Service, the Army, all the branches of the military, and they do this, this is what they do. They provide this service and many agencies have switched over to doing it this way rather than the traditional purchase. It would also give a little bit of, take a little bit of heat off of fleet. I know if I sent 10 cars over to Tom right now, I can see the wheels spinning right now and smoke coming out of his ears. That would really overload fleet to outfit those vehicles. And then, what does that mean? That means the sanitation truck and the other vehicles that are being serviced over there, you know, there's delays and everything. So, we took that into consideration on going this route of looking at how does it affect the entire city? So, and when, you know, just some recent training we had here that was put on by HR, the trainers talked about lean and using that model and being more efficient how you do things. So, looking at that, of having this done by the experts that do this all the time and being more efficient, efficient and effective with our resources and our manpower, it really fits that lean model that was presented by the instructors from Idaho State University. So, and recent studies.
Could you talk a little bit about why you chose to get trucks? Because I know there was a rationale there that was part of this efficiency idea. So, I was wondering if you could speak about that a little bit?
So, the people that supply police cars, the big three, the Chevy GZ and, or Chevy, Ford and Dodge, they are going away from vehicles. They don't want like the Taurus, the Caprice that we looked at, that turned out to not be so well. It was, so they're not, they're not, they're getting out of the business of making cars and they're going to traditional SUVs and trucks. And these are the vehicles that we're getting that tested the highest at the universe, or the Michigan State Police is where they do all their national testing for vehicles on their braking, their acceleration, their handling and their safety. So, these are all the vehicles that rated the top. Plus, the trucks would give us the ability to carry those needed equipment to and from training sites on top of being able to load all the gear that they need to. So, the SWAT officer would have all their gear in the back of their car and be able to carry additional equipment rather than trying to shove it in the back of an SUV. So, because the, we all know now that the SUVs, they used to be huge, now they're making them smaller and smaller and smaller and they're cutting down on the space inside and we carry a lot of equipment. So, that's just kind of the bottom line when it comes to that. So, and the resale value on the F-150s is a lot higher too. So, if we were to go back and say, look, after the life of this vehicle, if we want to trade it in or if we want to give it to someone else within the city, there's a better use of a truck.
Park department.
Yeah, absolutely. And we've done that with some of our other vehicles. They can use a truck a lot better than they can use an SUV. So.
Okay, we had a question here and then Claudia.
Yeah, I just had a couple of follow-ups because I had that same question about why pickups instead of the others. Can you remind us, what, on the last 10 vehicles that we got, what were those and what was their price compared to the price of the trucks? And then, is there a very big difference on the fuel economy on those?
So, for your first question, we got Explorers, the hybrid Explorers last year. And we looked at that and we looked at the efficiency of those. The cost actually, I think the trucks came in a little bit cheaper.
The trucks actually are less expensive, about $5,000 per unit. And the one thing with the Explorers that we're looking at and we're going to monitor is the fuel savings through using the hybrids and cost savings that way. But the trucks, because they have a little bit better incentive programs and things like that through the dealerships, the trucks are typically a little bit less expensive. However, you know, fuel efficiency and things, maybe not quite as good, but we offset that based on the need. And it's not, we don't ever envision that we're going to have a whole fleet of F-150 pickups. But we do have some specific needs with specific officers, whether they're involved in SWAT, whether they're instructors and, you know, firearms, things where they would have to maybe load things into a pickup. Like chief said, where you don't have quite as much room in an SUV. So, it's just a good option for those specific officers to have.
And then, when we did the, last year when we did the thing with Bancorp, how much are we on the hook for then, the next few years from the one we did last?
Nothing.
Because we did all of it, right? Okay. I just wanted you to remind me.
Yes, yeah. We paid everything. It was with our budgeted funds. And this is different than.
This will be on the hook for like the next four years?
Yes.
And is that going to be a problem? I mean, I know sometimes you have people trying to ram your cars and damage them that you're not hopefully anticipating, but is that going to be an issue with your, you know, current budgeted amounts if you have an incident like that come up where something gets totaled or?
No. And one example with this, with the cost that we have, we've got 100 and, well, we're talking 144,300 and that are marked towards that. And then, we're still have enough that we can replace, I think, three vehicles with our other funds in that same line item. So, it shouldn't ever be a problem.
So, last year when we got hit a few times, ICrimp, you know, paid some of the money for those vehicles that were damaged. So, generally, when we're not at fault, the insurance providers pay that amount of money to get those vehicles replaced. And so, we do seek those through legal and through ICrimp, so.
Okay, Claudia.
I have a few, actually. So, are the trucks four-door?
Yes.
So, are they, are the officers going to be able to transport perps?
Yes, they will have.
Suspects?
Yeah, so the people that we place into custody, there'll be a cage in the back like we have now with protective shielding for the officers so that they're not injured, so that they can't escape.
So, it's not like you're going to have to send a car to go transport someone? Okay, so given that, are they going to have locking truck beds for the officer's gear?
Yes.
They are? And they come with that?
They'll have a bed cover.
With a lock?
It'll be all part of the package.
Okay. And, okay, so, so will you be making, taking home the vehicle a requirement for officers? Because, I mean, are there any that say, well, I don't want everybody to know that I'm a cop, I don't want my family targeted? I mean, I know there's that mentality out there. So, are you, is that going to be an issue?
So, I think some of our officers that choose not to do that, they can leave them in the back parking lot with all of their gear in it, ready to go. So, there's a few, a handful that do that. I don't really want to make something mandatory. Or if you live somewhere where it's away from the station, too far away, we have a policy on that. If you live, let's say, in Lava Hot Springs, you can't take your vehicle home because it's too far away. So, if those officers have their vehicles here, so they still have their vehicle, the benefit that that does bring in is if we have a vehicle go down and we can use that vehicle that's left at the station as to work that shift. So, that kind of benefits us in the long run.
Because that was my next question.
Yeah, absolutely.
If everybody's taking home their vehicle, what happens when something's, you know, getting serviced? Okay. And then, are they four-wheel drive?
Yes.
Okay. And then.
So, all the vehicles that we do get now, we're getting them all-wheel drive. All the vehicles that we get.
Right.
So, what the all-wheel drive does, and when we go out to do our emergency vehicle operations training, so if you haven't had a chance, come out and do that with us, it's kind of fun, they handle so much better. They, compared to the old Crown Vics or the Caprices, they, the handling of them, they're so much safer, the all-wheel drives. Plus, it helps us get up to like Gwin, Johnny Creek and the Highland area when it snows. I mean, they.
Yeah. Yeah, you can't get up to my house without an all-wheel drive.
And these trucks, they designate them as pursuit-rated, which means they're handled a lot better in higher speed, but also they have the all-wheel drive. And not your normal F-150 pickup that you take off the lot doesn't have that. They're a police package vehicle.
Okay, last question, gentlemen. When, if, when would you get these vehicles? When would you, like physically, get these vehicles if?
Well, we would anticipate, if we can make the order within the next week or two, I would anticipate probably by early summer. I mean.
Oh, so it's, it'll be this year?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so one of the issues that all the companies had is they had.
Yeah. So, you want to get them in the next couple of weeks, there's a couple of problems with that. Sole source, number one, you got a legal notice that you got to do all of that stuff. And so, you're talking a couple of months probably before you can order them anyway. So, just keep that in mind. I guess the question is, is how long is it going to take? It sounds like a couple, two or three months to get all the vehicles.
After, after all the Jared stuff is done.
I'm sorry, that was just.
And we have, we've talked to Rich Deal about this in the past when we came through with this and he had looked at it and he had approved it as a sole source back then. So, I think that will help streamline that process a little bit so we can move forward.
I guess I'm just saying there's a process that we have to follow.
Absolutely.
Okay, but it'll be this year?
Yes.
Okay, Roger had a question. A couple of questions.
When you say they're presented to us turnkey, one of the things I thought I remembered was that they would do service on a rental vehicle for a while. I thought that was presented last time. Where we wouldn't be doing as much service in the initial contract.
As far as what, what do you?
Well, change a while and sometimes that comes as part of a rental agreement.
Lease.
No, I don't remember that.
Lease agreement. Okay, so we would assume all the upkeep? If we blow an engine in this first or second year, it's on us?
It's on warranty.
It'll still have a manufacturer warranty on it.
Okay, so we will operate, what is the warranty?
Warranty is the three-year, 36 bumper to bumper, but then it's five-year, $100,000 for the drivetrains.
And that's might even increased with the recent, I know Ford has recently increased the warranties, so.
You might check that. Because a lot of times with this kind of use, those warranties don't apply.
So, double. If it's a pursuit-rated vehicle, which means it has the larger brakes, the handling package, the warranty, they say, we'll honor that warranty if it's a pursuit-rated vehicle. If you were to make a police vehicle out of just a regular F-150, then it would void that warranty.
Okay, so, so we're looking at warranty. The other question I have is life expectancy. What I saw you project up there was about 8,600 miles a year. We've been replacing it five or six years. Are you saying we're going to get 10 or 12 years?
Yes, absolutely. That's what we project.
If I remember right, that's because you're not rolling them 24/7, you're rolling them a shift at a time.
Right. So, you're going to cut down, well, you're going to be putting a third of the miles on them and maybe even a little bit less than a third than you would if you're rolling them on a day shift and a night shift. Because right now, what we're doing, we have car per two officers and they, we have A and B shifts. So, if we have day shift, they're running seven days a week. And this will cut it down to, they'll run four days a week to, per officer. So, each shift is sharing now and then, once we distribute that out, it will cut that down quite a bit.
Before I can really move on this, I've got to see a long-term vehicle strategic plan and how this plugs into it. Because I've got a, I've got a C on paper, finite matter, that says, we're going to replace X number of cars over this time spent. Because it opens up the door, in my estimation, if we don't do that, to where we get to an impasse where we have to replace a lot of cars at one time. And I just, I just need to know.
So, what would you like to see specifically on?
Well, I'd like to see, we've got a fleet department now, I'd like to see the life of your cars when the replacement is anticipated and know, are we going to go, is it projected we're going to do another 10-car lease in another five years? You know, those type of things. I just need to know that I'm not, I need to see a bigger picture than the snapshot of 10 cars right now. And I hope you understand that.
Sure.
It's just, I feel that that's due diligence on my part.
Absolutely, and that's something that we're also working on with PD right now. One thing to be aware of is when we start a new program, which is a car per officer, you're going to make a big investment upfront. And so it's going to be challenging down the road to get those cars rotated out, because if we buy a large amount at one time, like you're saying, we're going to replace a lot at one time. So anytime you start a new program, like officer per car, you're going to have that difficulty. But that's something that we're working on.
I just think, you know, in terms of planning, we know that these cars will have a larger life expectancy. So that means we're not going to realize the savings on these cars until year six, seven, eight, et cetera. We need to see the plan as to how that configures with our current fleet. Because I just don't want to have us hit a $500,000 or a $1 million obstacle seven or eight years down the road because we haven't planned far enough.
Okay, yes.
And Tom, this is probably a question for you, and it's somewhat related to that, and it's based on school bus fleet experience. I'm assuming, if my logic is correct, that basically, once everything gets rolled out and sequenced in terms of vehicles and all of that, that basically this gives us a longer window, a larger window in the life of a vehicle, so that in theory, we might not have to roll over so many vehicles every single year because we've got more years to spread over. Is that?
Absolutely, and the one thing that we were looking at when the chief and PD first started, we first started talking about this, we started pulling their fuel records from the fuel site. And what was the first thing that jumped out at us, at me, was that these vehicles were driving out of their warranties. Or we're paying for a vehicle that's got, you know, a three-year, 36,000 mile warranty, and they're running out of 36,000 miles in, you know, 12 to 18 months, just driving, that we call hot seating, where they just stay in these cars all day and all night. And so, once you move towards this car per officer model, it starts to alleviate some of that, to where you can start stretching things out, and it doesn't become, you know, quite so chaotic. I can tell you right now, that fleet, you know, probably 50 to 75% of our repairs are PD right now. I mean, these cars, they go out, they're hot and heavy, and they're running 24 hours a day, and it's hard on them, you know, so.
Super, Rick, you got a question?
Yeah, in your current fleet, how many of those cars are due for replacement this year?
We've got three this year that we're looking to rotate out that are above that 125. And, well, and we probably have maybe six total that could be, but we've got three that we've designated that have the mileage.
In theory, you, on a police car, you probably want to start rotating them out at about 80,000 to 90,000 miles. We're making these stretch a little bit because we're trying to get to this point, and because we're waiting for some, the rest of these vehicles to come in. So we're going a little bit beyond where we would like to see that. That's why we were asking for these 10 cars and to look at the sole source sooner rather than later, so that we can get the ball rolling on this. And that's why we've been working with fleet and looking at the future of, you know, getting 10 now and not asking for everything now, because if we get 10, then that's, you know, there's going to vary the miles throughout the years, and we can trickle those replacements as we do that. But if we could replace those other ones, we would, but we understand that the confines of the budget of the city, and we're trying to work within our confines of our budget, so.
If I can make one additional comment. At our AIC meetings last month, while Mayor John Evans from Garden City and I were walking him down to the legislative luncheon, this topic came up for some reason, I don't remember why, but he said it was probably the best thing he's ever done since he's been mayor of his city. In terms of efficiency, operations of the department, cost savings, the car per man was one of the best things he's ever done.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
So.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm just wondering, and Jared, this is probably in your bailiwick too. So the issue of you can't take your vehicle home if you live somewhere else now, the probability?
15 miles, yes.
Within how many?
15 miles.
50 miles, so the probability?
15, 1/5.
1/5, okay. So the probability of very many, well, I don't know what the probability of a significant number of officers who might theoretically have assignments that would require them to have one of these trucks? I don't know what the probability is that a large number of them would live 15 miles away. So my question is, what, if anything, can legally be done to correlate officer assignments with these trucks which have, you know, kind of a specialized use? So that we don't accidentally end up in a situation where eight of the people who we want to have these trucks outside their front door so they can get somewhere fast are ineligible to do so? Does that?
It isn't just truck, these trucks though, it's all.
I know, but I'm talking specifically because these, these aren't going to be for general patrol, as I understand it, they're for specialized. So if, for example, all our, and I don't know, SWAT team members, if, let's say they had these 10 trucks, and eight of them lived too far out to take their truck home, then we've bought the truck, but we haven't necessarily achieved the result that we were intending by buying the truck in the first place.
So I can answer a couple of your questions, and I'll probably defer to Jared, so. So they will be used for general patrol, because we don't have a specialized SWAT team. We are a specialized, certain things, we're cross-trained in that.
Right.
So they would be used for patrol, and they would have their gear inside of their truck. The majority of our officers do live within that 15 miles. We have a few officers that are not on our tactical unit that do live up in Idaho Falls. We've got a few that live out in the county. But the majority of our officers that do that, they understand that when they take those assignments, and if you have a car, that car's going to stay here. So we have targeted for the trucks, the assignments on the trucks, assignment-specific. So if that's a legal issue, then I'll turn that over to Jared.
So Jared Johnson, city attorney, the only legal issue you would come up with that would be a problem is if you established a policy that specifically discriminated against somebody because of where they live.
Right.
And obviously, people have the right to live outside that 15-mile radius, but they have to understand that that comes with some policy decisions behind it. And so the policies that we have and that we would enforce, as long as there's a reasonable basis for the general safety and health and welfare of the citizens, we would be able to defend that policy no problem. And if it resulted in many of the trucks having to be parked here and bringing personal vehicles to get those trucks, then there would be no problem with that.
Okay.
But we couldn't craft a policy that said, "You can't have a truck if you live outside." It has to be based on the assignments of the officers and what their, what the needs of the department are.
Right, and I guess where I don't want, with the situation, I would be leery of would be, since in many of the bullet points in the presentation, it was about having the officer be able to go from their home to the incident. And that was part of the significant justification for getting 10 vehicles. Well, if we get those 10 vehicles, and then for other internal assignment issues, we end up with those half or a significant number of those vehicles having to be parked here, then we really haven't done anything to increase the efficiency, because the officer still has to go from their home to the department to the incident. That's what I'm wondering.
But when they get to the department, their vehicle's there and all the gear is there, so they don't, their issue that they were running into, I think, is that then they didn't, well, but then they, when these officers did come in, there were no vehicles for them to get to the incident with. But, so I see what you're saying, but.
So let's, this discussion, we're going to have to discuss this next week anyway. So this discussion really truly is more of, let's have this discussion there rather than here. So thank you very much. We will be having the discussion now. In saying that, I stepped out because I tried to judge how these are going to go with our new council and everything, and this has gone long, so I ordered lunch. Our lunch is there. The issue that I have is we have a citizen group that is here that is on the last of the thing, and I'm not going to have them come back. So I want you three out of there, and I want to ask, to relight the night, folks, we're going to jump to agenda item number 10 before, and don't forget, you're ahead of lunch here too, so that's important for you. I want to jump to number 10 and just, and do that so that they can go about their business. We'll jump to agenda item number 10, Relight the Night Buster Brown Sign Project. Relight the Night RTN representatives and the city staff will give an update regarding the refurbished historic Buster Brown sign project for the Old Town Pocatello area. RTN representatives are requesting the following regarding the sign project. One, city accept the parcel of property from RTN, Old Town Pocatello. Two, waive the fees for splitting of the parcel and the deed work. Three, allow RTN to replace a sign on the parcel at no expense to the city. And four, accept the sign upon completion of the project.
Thank you, Councilman Mayor. Merrill Quoth, Public Works Engineer, and I'm here with Randy Dixon from Relight the Night Committee, with Stephanie Pelagi with the Old Town Pocatello Foundation, and Crystal Chanda with A&E Engineering. So with that, we wanted to start out by giving just a quick, brief history of our signs that has been placed downtown. And the three that are highlighted here is the Chief Theater, which was the kickoff of the signs and the lights in 2013, the Greyhound sign in 2015, and Fred's photo in 2019. Now, this, they said, is of the beginning of 16 signs that overall that has been completed, and there's a handout just for information only with those signs on them that has been passed out. With that introduction too, I'd like to just, Relight the Nights is a committee of the Old Town Pocatello Foundation Incorporated, and they've been longstanding since 2012. So with that, I'm going to turn time over to Randy to give a little bit more highlights if he desires at this time, or Stephanie.
Well, first of all, we'd like you, we'd like to thank you for allowing us to be here. We think we have done some incredible work in this community, and basically, relighting these signs is more than just relighting a neon sign, it's the preservation of history. And this community and this city has been right there with us the entire time, and I want to thank the mayor, I want to thank planning for all of the efforts that you put into our projects. Most of these projects don't involve the city. The city does indeed own the Chief Theater sign. We entered into a memorandum of agreement in 2013 regarding that sign with the city. And of course, the Greyhound sign is also a city-owned sign. This will be the third city-owned sign, the Buster Brown sign. And the reason we're asking the city to accept the sign, we were very creative in finding the spot to place this sign. What happened was that Stephanie and I, and even Terrence New, were under the impression that the place where we're going to place it, and I've got the handout that shows it at the corner of UP Avenue in Center, I take it, the fact is, we assumed that was a city easement. Well, it wasn't, and Merrill was able to clarify that. The city owns a sliver next to UP Avenue. That is a 10-by-12 parcel, which A&E Engineering surveyed for us. And we really think that if the city owns the sign, and we agree to, on an ongoing basis, agree to keep the sign maintained, that the city will cover it with insurance and supply electricity to it, just as we are doing with the Chief Theater sign. That's the model. This is an incredible sign, it's a great history, it's going to be a great way to welcome people to the West Side. And we think it's important that the city accepts the property. We've already raised $10,000, and by the way, we've raised a lot of money. We are very solvent, we pay our bills, and I think you can all agree, we've done some good work, and I'm just real proud of Old Town. So, but if the city were to own this sign with no, you won't be faced with maintenance or upkeep. We're agreeing to do that, just as we have done with the Chief. By the way, we raised $25,000 over and above the money that the city supplied for the Buster Brown sign for ongoing maintenance of that sign. And to this day, I think we spent $2,250 on maintenance and repairs of the Chief sign. We've got actually $4,400 in the Greyhound sign. At this point, we're glad to do it. We agreed to do that when we relit it, and you agreed to supply power to it. So this is just an ongoing effort for the city to be involved in the preservation of history, and boy, is this a neat sign. You're going to love this one. That is, of course, an architectural rendering of where it will be, and it's an incredible location, and it serves as a real benefit to the community. This community loves its neon, and I think every one of us can agree on that. So with that, we're asking you to do just exactly the four different things that Merrill described.
If I could just give a little bit of another background too, because I like order, and maybe, and I know we're hungry, but I want to give a little bit in the middle of here too, and before we, a quick discussion on that. This sign, as is talked about, it'll be on the west side of Center Street and UP Avenue, and it'll be 80, it's originally placed now about 80 feet from its original location, and that's why placing it here is important. The other part to this is, is that it'll be about 12 feet from the ground to the bottom of the sign, 17 to the top, and it'll be oriented 45 degrees to Center Street, so when you come up under the underpass, it's not one way or the other, you don't have to turn, it's just on that diagonal that way. And we'll be able to, it runs off 12 amps, which doesn't seem like a lot, but it's a little bit more because our signals are running on about 2.5 amps with the LED and so forth. So takes a little bit of power, but it can be hooked into the power of the circuit where the trees are, the tree lights there, and the auxiliary powers are there. Now, Old Town has an agreement, Old Town Foundation, that pays for some of that power, that power there, and we would need to look at that agreement again. It's been fairly old, as we've talked about with city staff too, looking at that, and that's how the power would be paid for this sign, is understanding through that and through that agreement. So, and then there'd be a plaque there that explains the history of this sign and more of the Buster Brown sign. I did have one question on the bottom, and I know we're hungry, but I just wanted to know if anybody knew Buster Brown's name, this dog's name was?
Tyke.
It was Tyke.
Oh.
Exactly. Do you know his name?
What does he get for getting?
He gets an attaboy.
An attaboy.
Anyway, so I thought that was interesting.
Merrill, could I bring up one other point?
Yes.
And that is that what we have done is installed digital timers on all of the signs that we're responsible for, and we have convinced many local business owners to install these digital timers as well. And the reason is, they're smart, they know latitude and longitude, they know dusk, date, year-round, they know daylight, savings time. And what happens is, when you hook these things up to these digital timers, they come on at dusk, which is about 5:30 in the middle of the winter, and they go off at midnight, and they come on at 9:30 in the middle of the summer. You add those two numbers that they're on together and divide them by two, and you've got about four hours of operation. So efficiency is key here, and that's what we're striving for, is the efficiency of the signs. And then they all are synchronized, they come on at the same. And then they all are synchronized, they come on at the same time, they go off at the same time. Our city is receiving some real notoriety because of what we're doing with our neon. We recently received an Estor Perpetua Award for our efforts with Relight the Night from the Idaho State Historical Society last June. So, I think what we're doing is very credible, and we really would appreciate your support, Merrill.
No, that's fine. And this is where the plaque would be, again, and a quick aerial photography there. Key point is that last week, on February 5th, the Historical Preservation Committee gave the approval for the Certificate of Appropriateness for this sign and for the location. There will be, there will be the need of a sign permit here, but we have checked into it, it will not be considered an off-premise sign because it is, for this purpose, historical. There's no advertising, there's nothing that goes along with that. So, we have checked into that and covered those. Some of the key points is the owner is donating this property. Steve Gallifin was key in coordinating the transfer to the property to Relight the Nights, and A&E Engineering has come forward, and they're donating their time and resources for the design and the survey work for this project too. So I felt that was key to let you know that there are others that are pitching in.
So, Merrill, I have a couple of questions. Maybe this will speed it up a little bit. I don't hear anybody getting too negative about this, but I do know that we are always concerned about waiving fees and not paying for fees. What are we talking about? How many dollars are we talking about this?
We're looking at the plat with the resources that we have, the city that would do that is about $500 to $600 for a one-lot short plat that would be required on the city's side to, for the plating process.
Okay.
And that would be the only fees, there would be the sign permit fee, but that would be up to the sign company, and that would be within their bid, so that would not be waived.
Actually, there's not a sign permit cost because we've already obtained the Certificate of Appropriateness, and inside the historic district, we're not required to pull us an additional sign permit, so there's no cost.
Okay, what about the deed work?
The deed work would all be within the plat, and A&E is the one that's doing that work.
And that's split within the $500 to $600?
Yes, that covers, that's all covered within that and the A&E's donation, that they're donating probably $2,500 to $3,000 worth of time and materials for their work to be done.
Thank you.
But it's only, yeah, the city's work is only the $500 to $600.
I think she's donated more than $2,500 to $3,000, but that being said, the, what was my question? Do we have any idea how much the electricity for, will be a month?
I think you could probably calculate that by saying that if it draws 12 amps four hours a day, there's gotta be a formula for that.
There is.
So, the cost, right now, the cost of the operation of the Greyhound sign is on average about $40 a month.
Okay.
The sign is a little bit, about the same size.
It's smaller.
Yeah, a little bit smaller, so we don't anticipate that cost to be more than $40 a month.
Yeah, 40-ish, okay.
Can I also comment on the selection of this site? Because that is part of our funding for the sign. The site is within 100 feet of its original sign, and part of the funding of the renovation cost of the sign, half of it is actually coming from a grant that I wrote to the Idaho Heritage Trust. And typically, the trust does not fund projects that are not on, on a project that is not located on its original historic site. So we lobbied with our group and Idaho, to the Idaho Heritage Trust Board of Trustees that would allow us to obtain funding for half the cost of sign renovation on a sign that's not on its original location. So we even have more support from Idaho Heritage Trust in this project than we have in the past, so.
Sounds good.
Okay. So we are to the four things now, I'm caught up, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm just trying to help move it along and stuff because I'm seeing people a little thinking, alright, this looks like a good idea. I know we're gonna end up talking about this probably next week, but...
We'd like to come before March 5th, if everything falls into place, the regular calendar of March 5th.
Should be able to do that if we talk about it next week and people are in concurrence with it. The only concern I have is when we start waiving a fee, and so I would like to just let the council know that I wanna talk about the fee next week and see if there's, instead of waiving it, seeing if we can pay for it somewhere else or something, because once we start waiving a fee, then we're gonna end up waiving another fee, and another fee, and another fee, we don't want, don't wanna do that. That's at least where we've been historically, so Rick?
Where does the actual install stand at this point? Is the sign ready to go?
Actually, this is crucial. The sign is in the possession of Blaze right now, they're measuring the neon, we know what the costs are, we work closely with Blaze on several different signs, but we need to get started. And we are hesitant to give them the half down, which is $4,500, before we have your, before we have your permission and to move forward. If we don't get started, then we're not, our plan is to relight the sign on June 6th at First Friday Art Walk, the busiest art walk of the year, and if we don't hustle, we're gonna be behind schedule, so that's why we would need to get...
That's why we need it on the March 5th agendas.
Right, and we're also hesitant in committing to have the sign, the renovation start because half of the cost of the renovation is grant-funded, and it's tied to that location.
Fair enough.
This will be on the west, east, the east side of the taxi building?
Actually, the south, west, or UP Avenue, it's...
Yeah, so it's the east side of the taxi.
It's my understanding that building won't be there much longer?
Um, they have come to site plan, and they asked if they could take that down, and that would also have to go through the Historic Preservation Committee is my understanding, and through that, to find out if the building's gotta come down or not, or can come down, I should say.
We don't find that has, is an issue for us. The sign's gonna end up where it ends up one way or another, even if they take those three offices, that'll track the three offices down, which they apparently want to do, to increase parking for what they're going to do upstairs in the Pioneer Block building, which is fantastic. So, and we think that'll actually enhance that piece of property and give people a really nice glance at Old Town Pocatello as they exit the underpass heading west.
How close would this bull sign be to that building as it currently stands?
That is a 10 by 12 plot or parcel, and it'll be in the center of that, and a five feet.
And you can see on the aerial, there's, I get that there's more than five feet to the building.
Would that bull sign be endangered at all if the bull sign goes up before the building's demolished?
No, I don't think it would be. We still have ample room between, we're at least, I'm gonna say 15 feet maybe to the center of the sign, to where the edge of the building would be.
Okay, thanks. All right.
Can I make one of those comments?
Sure.
I just wanna commend all of you on your historic preservation efforts because I think this is so important to our city and the work you're doing is wonderful. And special thanks to Crystal too, for donating what you're donating, so thank you to all of you.
Yeah, thank you. We'll, I'm sure it's gonna end up on the agenda on the 5th, we'll have a discussion next week, and Merrill will definitely have an idea of what, whether or not we'll have it on the agenda or not.
And I'll get you the exact amount of the fee.
Thank you. Sounds good. Okay, thank you. With that, we jumped ahead to, so we could have the citizens be able to go back to do what they need to be doing and stuff. We are going to break for lunch, we'll probably be about a half hour, would be an estimate for me, and we'll jump back to probably the 2020 COPS grant, so thank you very much, we'll be back in a little bit.
Thanks, and welcome back to our meeting. We are going to go ahead and get started with agenda item number eight, which is the 2020 COPS Hiring Program Grant. Police Department staff will be available to discuss the availability of a 2020 COPS Hiring Program Grant. The grant objective is to increase the capacity of law enforcement agencies to implement community policing strategies that strengthen partnerships for safer communities. Staff is seeking council guidance to pursue the grant.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for taking the time to hear us on this. My name's Roger Shai, I'm the Chief of Police for Pocatello Police. Along at the table here, I've got Corporal Zach Barci and Lieutenant John Walker. Both of these guys have put a lot of effort into this already, and I would like to thank them for this, as well as Ann Nichols for providing this information to us in reference to this grant. Every year, these grants come out, and we look at them and see if they're feasible for us, for the citizens of Pocatello, for our community, and what our mission, vision, and values are, and this one, there's a lot of things in this grant that stood out to us that interested us. I should probably drink some water, huh? There we go. So, on that, we, every year, we've come and asked for additional people, and it's in our five-year plan that was submitted three years ago to add two people every year. So I know the question of why five people, we will explain that and the reasoning behind that. We have already had a lot of conversations with Fort Hall PD, with the Crisis Center, with the Bennett County Prosecutors. This is actually a pretty unique grant to bridge some gaps in our community and provide some education that's needed in reference to a lot of different topics. We had a great conversation with Chief Teton out at the, on the reservation at their Tribal Justice Center on partnering, further partnering with them in reference to different things, and we actually were able to simplify a lot of other things just from that meeting that stemmed from this grant. So, I'm gonna let Corporal Barci, who's done a lot of the legwork on this already, explain this to you. There's some time constraints on this, so this one's real important that we look at the different aspects of it and get the ball rolling on whether or not we wanna continue furtherance of it because there's the time constraints of it. What happens with these grants is the federal government will put them out there, but they'll say, you only have X amount of time to get this done. So we've been hustling on this to get it because there's a lot of work that needs to be done, so I'll turn it over to Corporal Barci.
Thank you very much, Chief Shai, and I just wanna start off by saying that I'm grateful to work for the Pocatello Police Department. I honestly believe that I work with some of the best men and women that this nation has to offer, and that we do everything we can to make sure that this city is safe, and that this is a great opportunity with this grant to increase our ability. So this is the 2020 COPS Hiring Program, if you hear me call it CHP, that's what it stands for, COPS Hiring Program Grant by the Pocatello Police Department. I wanna start off by saying that we have a problem that we wanna address with the Police Department, we're seeing an increase in gang activity. I work as a School Resource Officer at Century High School, I've had several times this year alone where I've had known gang members come to Century, and I have no doubt that they were trying to recruit inside a high school. We are seeing increase in gang activity, we're seeing increase in motorcycle gangs, Hells Angels, other motorcycle gangs in the area, along with graffiti and those kind of things, drug activity. We have been labeled a hyde district, which means that there's a lot of drugs coming up and down the I-15 corridor, and it makes a major stop into this area. Last night alone, we had an officer that investigated what was thought to be a DUI, driving under the influence of alcohol and/or drugs. Instead, he pulled over the vehicle, after the vehicle was pulled over, she did a great job going beyond the stop and found a golf ball size of meth in the vehicle, along with a bunch of cash and two firearms. And that was just last night alone.
A pound.
A pound. Human traffic, and when we talk about human trafficking, ICU just had a symposium about human trafficking, the fact that it's going on, it's everywhere, it's here, and we wanna be able to address it more, and we, you know, we wanna be on the cutting edge, the leading of stopping that because we recognize that it's everywhere. Violent crime, the FBI statistics for violent crime is murder, rape, robbery, aggravated assault, burglary, larceny, murder, and motor vehicle theft. You could ask any Pocatello police officer, in the month of January, it's probably the busiest month that I've had in my 12 years of being a Pocatello police officer, and we were very involved in violent crime and stopping it, and we wanna make sure that we combat this, and everyone did a great job in solving these crimes. Part of the solution that we have is this grant goes in partnership of the direction that we really wanna go. It's important that we increase community-oriented policing, and you hear that a lot, but sometimes it's just thrown out there in reference to target words, but what we wanna do is we wanna do three things, we wanna do partnerships, and we wanna, we're gonna explain to you who our partners are gonna be, and the mayor and the city council, you are one of our partners, right? We wanna make sure that we educate and prevent as much as possible, because enforcement is not everything. We wanna educate as much of the community as possible to let them know how we can better our community and how we can make sure to stay out of trouble, or how we can help those people that are in need. And we wanna come, we wanna have a task force that is assigned to investigate, to educate, and to prevent and to enforce these different areas. Our partnerships that we're looking at for this grant is specifically ask for, who are you gonna have partners with, MOUs of understanding, those things. We have already talked with the Fort Hall Police Department, and we're looking at a memo of understanding with them. We've talked with the Bennett County Prosecutor's Office, with Prosecutor Steve Herzog, and the Southeast Idaho Behavioral Crisis Center that's right across the parking lot, along with the Pocatello Free Clinic, which, it's a great facility over there, I don't need to tell you how amazing it is to have all that located in one central spot, but we are looking for MOUs with those three partners, and each of them are gonna be critical in going forward. Education and prevention, so we wanna make sure that, part of the education aspect, we went and talked with Fort Hall, and when we talked with Fort Hall, they said, you know, we have a lot of issues with our casino and our hotel, you know, we know that we have human trafficking, we know that we have drugs. And we went to them and we said, we know that you know that you have that, and what are you doing, and how can you help us, because we have a lot of hotels too. And we're sure that there's a lot going on in those hotels, that we would love to gain more information, more knowledge, and that we would like to team up and come together and figure out, okay, how can we communicate better as departments, and how can we better help the community by doing that? Sometimes reinventing the wheel is the long way to go. We wanna learn from them, and we wanna to bring them along. The prosecutor office, they would be great in reference to education, the Fort Hall Prosecutor and the Bennett County Prosecutor, they could talk more, they could communicate more and figure out how we could better help and serve the people that are in this area. And then we could also make sure that, with the Crisis Center, Matt is the director over there, and he is happy to come out and to educate and to explain what is all available in that area. Topics for education would include, and this is not limited to, but drugs, human trafficking, gangs, violent crime, and other things. One of the, you know, things happen in a roller coaster, they come and they go, but one thing that we recently had happen was a bank robbery, and the banks came to us and said, you know, we used to, we had some training from officers, but we've had a lot of people since leave, and they didn't have that training, can you please come back around and do that again? And that's one of those things that this team would be able to continue to monitor and make sure that people are educated and trained on. The enforcement action tasks, so to accomplish the goal of the Pocatello Police Department, they look to add five new officers to the department. Those five officers would be over a task force that would educate, prevent, and then they would make sure that they would enforce these crimes that we've been talking about. The CHP or the grant objective is to increase the capacity of law enforcement agencies, and really, they wanna strengthen partnerships, they wanna get communication going, and they wanna fund personnel, also technology, equipment, and training. In this case, we'd be asking for personnel. So far, what has been done, we, like what Chief Shai said, we've been doing a lot of legwork, we haven't had much time, but we've gotten a lot done, and a lot of good things have already come out of it. We've met with the Fort Hall Police Department and their Chief of Police and some others. We met with, obviously, Chief Shai, the Bennett County Commissioners, we went to, I met with the Commissioner's Office, and Lieutenant Walker was there as well, just to let them know what we hope to accomplish with this team. We've formed these partners that we've already talked about in reference to the Prosecutor's Office and Chief Teton, and we started writing the grant application as much as we can, right, before we have all of our memos of understanding, and then we've done our budget. This is what the budget looks like, I submitted a copy when we were on the docket. To explain the budget fully, the first line item is what a officer would get per hour, all right, the very first year they're hired, second, third, and fourth year. The second line is base pay for the entire year, then the rest of it becomes allowable fringe benefits that the grant allows. Two of the fringe benefits that the grant does not allow would be like if someone came in with a bachelor's degree and we offered them the $3,000, or VIBA, they don't allow those. This is the allowable fringe benefits. Down at this, the grant pays- The grant pays for 75% of the officers that we would acquire for three years, and the city would pay 25% for three years. The fourth year, the city would pay for 100% of the officer and the fringe benefits. And then after the fourth year, the grant would be over. So if you look at the bottom of my chart here, where it says "Grant Portion 75%," that is what the grant is paying for, the first year being $362,269.86, and so on. And then the bottom portion is what the city would be submitting, $120,756.62. So what I did is that would be for one officer, and then the bottom two lines says "Grant Total Five Officers," because we're asking for five officers through this grant. So the grant total, the federal government would pay $1,142,091.13 over four years for five officers. The city, for four years, for five officers, would pay $918,374.67. What are some of the needs that I have, that we have from the mayor and the city councils? We want direction and approval. This is something, we know that, we recognize that this is a need that we have with law enforcement, that we want to address these problems and issues that we have, and this is one way that we can do it. And it's a mapped-out plan, a vision, it goes in line with what Chief Shai said about having additional officers with his five-year plan. We would, you know, we need your direction, we also need a letter of support showing commitment to continue funding. With these grants, they want to see direction, in reference to what's going to happen when the money goes away, so we want that. In reference to the time constraints that Chief Shai talked about, really, I need to have the finished grant in front of our legal and finances. I've talked to them, and maybe given them some candy or some thank yous, but February 24th is the latest I can do it, and I have to submit this by March 11th. So, and I still need to meet with the Fort Hall Business Council before I can officially get an MOU signed with them. The nice thing about Fort Hall, we've talked with several people out there, including like Paul Echohawk and some others that have worked with them, and they said, "You know what? We remember back in the day where we used to have an MOU with the City of Pocatello or the Pocatello Police Department, and we would like to potentially head that way again, and communicate, and come together." We went out and met with Chief Teton and some others, and I can tell you two things that already came from that meeting, that didn't even have anything to do with the grant, but it has made more communication between us. One is, they have a DARE officer that they just put through training, and we have a DARE officer that's been doing DARE for a couple of years now, and we're getting them together so they can communicate, and they can say, "Hey, what are you saying that works well, and how can we, you know, share expertise?" So that was great, they're both very excited about it, I think it would be beneficial. The other thing, we had a pursuit that led out all the way to Fort Hall, because bad guys don't know boundaries, right? And they don't stop at the borders, unfortunately. And so, we got out there, and Chief Teton looked at us and said, "You know what? Our guys wanted to help, and they wanted to be more helpful, but we don't have your radio channel." So that's one thing that we're like, "Well, we need to get that fixed," right? And so, I look forward to the opportunity to continue to communicate, and come together in reference to these different partners.
First of all, when is this grant supposed to go in effect if we're awarded?
So, the grant is due March 11th. They don't have an end date in reference to when they would say that it would, if you're selected or not, usually it's a couple of months, and then it would have to go in effect six months after that.
So, you think you'd get approval June? And then six months after?
Yeah, that would be my best guess.
Okay, so let's just say July will be. So you get acknowledgement in July that it's awarded. So this would actuate then six months afterwards, which would be December roughly?
We could considerably line it up with our fiscal budget.
Yeah, we could try and shoot for October.
How many officers did we reduce from you last year? Just one?
One, and I asked for two.
So, you're saying three?
Well, yes.
That's how you want to be bad, so.
You reduced one officer.
Correct.
But then you also reduced, you also, last year, you reduced an officer and a steno?
A support, at least support specialist.
Yes. Did you have two, you had two?
Yes, two.
Okay. So, just that observation. Second one, I think your budget probably needs to really address healthcare, at least, anticipate what health care increases might be.
Always does.
Always does.
Yeah, it always increases, so seeing that flat, I mean, the other ones aren't flat, but healthcare cannot be flat, because we know it's not. And you probably need to check with Heather to find out what the trend has been over the last four years, to anticipate at least that minimum type of increase.
I appreciate that feedback, that's great, and I can talk with Heather. I've submitted this to finance as well, to make sure that they don't check my math.
Okay, yeah, I understand that. So, I guess what we're being asked to do is look into the crystal ball and say, "Where will our needs be four years from now?" And theoretically, four years from now, I will not be here. So, anticipating that need based on perhaps growth and some stuff like that, we probably need to look at where those needs are, and sometimes needs increase exponentially, not because of growth, but because of other things that are changing socially. So, you know, just a little bit of a justification for that would be helpful for me to.
So I have an answer for you on that. So I can tell you, just in the month of January, I'll give you even a smaller snapshot. The Detective Division is staffed with 17 people. They handled about 75 more calls for service just in the month of January alone. In one week, we handled three major felonies in the city, that included an officer-involved shooting, a bank robbery, and a kidnapping, just within one week. That, in my 25 years in the city of Pocatello, I have never had a busier January than the January 2020. And the high risk, the high liability issues that were out there, and I can tell you that our manpower is stretched, and this grant would do would help benefit that. And as we go forward, we don't see things getting any easier. We've stopped going to certain calls that we go, we don't go to Johnny's not doing his homework anymore.
Well, you don't do, so what a nice job. I don't know why you weren't doing homework.
So.
I'm sorry I interrupted you, Roger. I know there's been a, what I would say, a consolidation of services.
We have reviewed what the services we provide, and have really cut down to the bone of what we respond to. However, we're still 100% service police department. We don't, you know, I don't want to get to the point, I don't want to get to some points in California like, you know, we don't go to misdemeanors. We've reduced our civil standbys on, those are court ordered, the ones we go on. We just don't have the resources or the manpower. Funeral escorts is another thing that we stopped going on. So some services that we have reduced because of our staffing levels, and we've remained flat on our staffing levels. We're looking at a creative way to be able to come to the city and say, "What's a reduced cost? What's a better way to service the community?" And this grant was glaring. You know, we're dealing with a lot of things right now, too, that our domestic violence calls for service are, they've gone from one hour to three hours because of the Clark ruling. So additional delays in calls, because it's just they're taking longer. Our calls for mental health are at an all-time high, and those always take more time to deal with. And so when I look at the trend across the country, we're about 1.6 officers when we're fully staffed per thousand people. And that's if we stay stagnant. And what the projections have shown is that, you know, we're going to continue to grow, and as we continue to grow, we need to add officers. Well, it doesn't, it's not like I can just hire Zach off the street and say, "Here's your keys," and it takes about a year to get an officer up to speed and trained. So we're trying to be forward-thinking of saying, "Okay, we understand with growth coming, with the influx of issues of the gangs," and I'll tell you, human trafficking is one thing that really concerns me. And I was floored when I went to some training and learned that slavery is at an all-time high. And the fact that we do deal with it when we come across it, and we will, people will go to jail for that, but we, I really would like to have the availability to look into that, and expand our internet crimes against children, and those things that are plugging our country. And in order to do that, I need a few more people. And I looked at this grant and said, "This is the best way, this is the best bang for our buck." And to increase our partnership with Fort Hall, what a great opportunity to reach out.
Yes.
I just wanted to, and this is kind of related to what you're talking about, so this grant provides for five officers over five years with, over three years?
We sign up for four. We commit to four.
Four years. And so, I think you mentioned something about the plan for continuing once the grant stops paying. So in essence, we are hiring five new people. But we're getting some grant money, well, quite a bit of grant money, for a certain number of time, but then after that, they would be our employees.
I think the point that Chief is making is, we need these people, whether the grant gives us any money.
Right.
We really, really need these people.
So this is a way to have somebody else pay some part of it. But what we're looking at is hiring five people ultimately. Would the grant, would the focus that you've developed because of the grant requirements, do you see that continuing with those five people? Would they sort of, you know, once the grant's over, and they are just, I don't mean just, but they are our employees without this grant, would we still continue the same kind of program? Would their positions kind of stay the same? Do you see the partnerships and all the things that they would be doing, the education and outreach, all of that would continue?
I foresee that, absolutely, and it just getting better and enhancing. Every year, every year, we do, and we're in the process of that now, we do a training needs assessment, and during our budget meetings, we look and see what are the needs of the community, what are the needs, equipment needs, manpower needs, training needs, and how do we need to address this? What's changed? What shifts have happened? This has changed the whole world of how we investigate things. And five years ago, it wasn't that bad, and 10 years ago, this wasn't even an issue, right? But now, everything has gone and shifted, so we evaluate that. So, internet crimes against children is a big thing right now, and human trafficking. And if you would have told me, you know, five years ago, that the Super Bowl's the number one human trafficking event, I'd be like, "Get out of here." I wouldn't, but it is.
Cyber stalking, too. I know it's not maybe on the level of human trafficking, but it's reached an all-time high. I attended a training on that, and was just blown away at the methods that people use now to stop.
That's one of the best places we recruit our victims from. That's our access point. It's how we get into the homes, and we get the children that are sheltered that otherwise would have no exposure. Yeah, these needs are just critical because of these new things in place.
How many officers, like pretend this grant didn't exist? Because the needs are there regardless of whether or not the grant exists. So, if you were simply looking at the next four years, how many officers would you anticipate you'd be requesting regardless?
So, in our five-year plan, it is requested, we're asking for two a year. And that is so that we can keep up with the population, with the crime that's going on, the manpower that has to go into these calls, and to keep up with the national average and Idaho average. Right now, we're just below the Idaho average for officers per thousand, and we're well below the national average of officers per thousand. So when we looked at those numbers, and projected growth of the city, and the calls for service, and the trends in law enforcement, we looked at two officers a year, understanding that, you know, within the confines of the city budget, and it's, you know, two a year is a big ask, but it's not 10, so.
So, I mean, again, everybody, please check my logic, and how I'm applying my logic to numbers, right? But what I think I'm hearing is that over three years, two and a half years, whatever, over these same three years, regardless of whether or not the grant existed, you would be requesting six officers.
Essentially.
Correct, yeah, two a year.
And so, then, one way of looking at your current request is that we're going to be hiring five officers plus one over six years anyway, and we can do that either with the support of some external money, or without the support of some external money. Is that, I'm not in the weeds here, am I? Okay.
I think part of what we're looking at, talk about the grant, is we're asking you to commit money a couple of years in advance that otherwise maybe you're not obligated to.
If we get it, yeah, we're asking for the authorization to go after the grant and support it, and if we don't get it, I mean, that's.
Then we go to Plan D.
Yeah.
So what are the chances of getting the grant? I mean, I hate to even ask, I mean, are we a 50/50, or are we a 60/40?
First off, I can't put a percentage on it, unfortunately, I wish I could. I can tell you that the grant is about a $400 million grant, and there's lots and lots of agencies, and lots of professional grant writers, and, you know, New York, and LA, and Las Vegas, they're all putting in for it. What they're looking for, it kind of goes back to what we were talking before, is what they're looking for is, what plan do you have in place? What partnerships are you going to create? How do we know that you're not just fibbing, right? In reference to getting money? And how is this going to better your community going forward? And I think that we have a plan that really, people can look at from the outside and say, "They're not just putting, you know, smoke and mirrors up. They really want to do this, and they want to better the community, and bring Fort Hall in, and do it as a whole."
A Fort Hall partnership is a huge thing. If you watch the trends of the federal government, what's going on, there is a huge interest in, using a federal term, an Indian country. We recognize, you know, and I think maybe Roger and I, or Chief Shai, I'm sorry, may be a little more attuned to this because of our years as school resource officers, and we recognize the high population that comes from the reservation to Pocatello for education. ISU has made a huge offering with their reduced credit rates, and we just, it's a segment of our population that we feel like often is neglected, that we can really build a partnership with, and build something there that strengthens from all sides.
And that's something that's, like, might be different than some of the other agencies in Idaho cannot put in for this grant, because they don't have a partnership with that component. They don't have a Crisis Center that they can tap into and partner with.
Well, and to your point, it makes, it builds a bridge opposed to burning a bridge down, so that's absolutely true. Roger had a.
A couple of things, back to the budget. I would say you're going to have to add 20% to the last column you have, the 537. I think you're going to have to go to 600 and some thousand, just everything being what it is.
Well, in particular, when you factor in insurance.
When you factor in insurance and everything else. One of the things that might not be factored in here, sometime back today, we had a request for a car for every policeman. That's not in here either, you know? So, if you're talking about five more policemen, we're talking about five more vehicles. So, you know, that's a factor that we have to include as well, in terms of the big picture.
Yeah, in the big picture. We can't apply for that in the grant, we can only ask.
But I know, so I'm saying that that's our big picture, because we've got to pay for the car.
But understand that those are things that we've already looked at. Those are things that when we're looking at where we're going to place these people, are they going to be in patrol? Maybe a couple of them. But are they going to be maybe assigned to detectives? Probably. And a detective car costs a whole heck of a lot less than a squad car.
Okay, well, I'm just saying.
So those are all, those are all things that we've looked at.
That's something that we also have to anticipate, there's an additional cost outside of.
But it does go back to, you know, regardless of the grant, if you were going to be requesting two officers a year, we'd have to think about vehicles for them anyway. But it has to be factored.
But I also think that one of the things we really try to do is leverage money. So regardless of the grant, does it get the same consideration? So regardless of the grant, does it get the same consideration as we can leverage this for three years and get to a better place perhaps with less cost? I mean, that's, that's part of what has to be part of our formula. How do we leverage what our outlays will be over the next four to five years? And we can leverage a lot of that by getting a grant. So there's that factor. And then I guess I would reiterate the application period. You have to have it to Jared by the 24th, is that what you said?
I, yep, I need to have the legal and finance by the 24th of February.
Kind of scrambling because our time line.
And I need to have it submitted by March 1st.
What was your final date?
February 24th at noon is what I...
But the March...
March 11th.
So we would have to approve it at our first, our final approval date would be the first...
The 5th of March is when I come back, yeah.
Okay.
So Rick has a question and then...
Couple. Where would this specialty team fit in your department hierarchy?
So it would be run by a sergeant that's already existing in the department, and then they would be assigned to the detective division, and they would be focusing on the things that are in particular in the grant. We, you know, with, I've spoken with the mayor a lot about a few different incidents. And one of them has been, you know, our gang, gang issues that we've seen escalating and to be focused on a street crimes unit of going after a lot of violent offenders, human trafficking. But on the other end too, performing that education component with members of the community and providing that as need be as trends change in reference to the different issues. And they would work hand in hand with our HIDA, our HIDA district. Guys get tired, they go home, they say, hey, look, we were following this guy. Can you guys pick it up tonight? And they would be following that, and that would lead to, you know, often narcotics does lead to human trafficking, stolen guns, stolen firearms. It's, they all, they're all one in the same. So that's where they would be assigned to. Probably a couple would end up in patrol. So we have a current officer that I've reassigned to that division, and then the three from this grant would go probably to that specific division. And then the other two would go to patrol. So it would help us out twofold.
Are those salaries quoted? Are those patrol-level salaries? Are those...
Yeah, because the ones that we're hiring for are all going into patrol and they are not going on this team. They're just entering patrol and going through their training, and they're just going to be part of the department. The ones that are on this team are veteran officers.
So people that beat into this job.
Yeah, we would not hire someone and say, we want you to be on this team. They have to go and be a third-class officer, and they're going to take patrol calls.
You need your experienced people to be on this.
You know, maybe just real quick, interrupt you if it's okay. We spent some time working with NAPPD and working with their gang unit, and one of the biggest lessons we brought back from them was get after this gang problem before it gets a foothold in our community. Because they, one of the things they taught us and just stressed over and over was, if it's in, you'll never get rid of it. And they said the worst thing they ever did was ignore, put their head in the sand and say, it's not going to happen here. And then when it did, they consumed so much of their resources, diminishes their quality of life, reduces the safety of everybody. And I can't stress enough the urgency that we feel to get ahead of this before it gets a foothold here. We already see the problems. It's already coming at us. And if we don't allocate some resources and dedicate what it's going to take to take care of this, we're going to really regret it in the next five years.
I would guess that being on the freeway, two freeways, it's much like drugs that gangs export themselves, just like drugs.
Right, we sit at a perfect parable for that.
Sure. So we got Rick and then I got Claudia.
I'm surprised in your presentation, you haven't included other North Bannock County law enforcement agencies. Is the Sheriff's Office, Chubbick, others going to be involved in what you're trying to do?
There's a couple of reasons why they weren't, the ones that we included are the ones that we're entering with MOUs. Not that they're not, not that we don't want to communicate better with them and that we don't want to partner with them, but, you know, I only have so much time and I can only write so fast, and I have to get it, get it approved right through the grant system. And so we might bring them on as partners later on, but right now, our focus is Fort Hall Police Department, you know, the prosecutor's office, the crisis center, and we got to start somewhere and then we can build it and make it even better as we go.
Understand, those partnerships exist. We work very well together. That's something I'm proud of in this area, is the relationships we have. But to obtain this particular grant, we felt like we had a better chance at it if we were very focused. Because I think anybody that understands and reads grants would look at it and say, you're just throwing stuff against the wall hoping it sticks. But if we show them a very refined, very focused plan, and then we're going to work with these particular entities to accomplish these very specific things, we feel like our chances of being awarded the grant are enhanced greatly.
Are there any of these other agencies that might be considering the same grant?
Not that we're aware of, but that doesn't mean they're not. Because anyone is welcome to apply. Any, you know, the list is about that big of who can apply for it, so.
From my conversations with people up and down the valley here, I don't know of any other agencies that apply from southeast Idaho.
Claudia.
A couple of things. What about, you don't mention partnering with the feds at all?
So our partnership in reference to this grant with the local feds would be initially in reference to HIDA, right? We're going to talk about, we've already started a partnership with, because we've been labeled to HIDA district, and that's how we're going to open the door. But we're not limiting it to just that, right? Because we got to think of it as the picture of, this is how we're starting, but we hope to end much bigger, right?
The reason I ask is because my husband's a federal marshal.
Yes.
And, okay.
And we would love to have him come along.
But a lot of, but a lot of the cases involve the exploitation of children.
Sure.
And so I'm wondering if more partnering with them would give you a better chance of getting that grant because there is a huge exploitation problem in this community, huge, of the sexual exploitation of children. I mean, it's monstrous. You know that.
So one of the things that we can probably add in there is that we do have existing partnerships through the U.S. Marshals Task Force.
Right.
You know, we put in there our HIDA, but we also partner with our local FBI right here in Pocatello, and we do a lot of things. And that the fact that I think that the, so the Fort Hall Police is governed through the BIA, the Bureau of Indian Affairs, which is, which is, all their academy's a federal academy, so they're considered federal. So that might be that federal link that you're looking for, but we already have, we're the only agency that partners with the U.S. Marshals on the side of the state.
Okay. And I just wanted to make sure that you guys were...
Right, and part of the application is they ask us specifically for existing partnerships.
Okay.
And so we already include that already.
Okay, and the other thing, it's an observation. I personally have seen an increased presence of Mongols in our community, which really scares me. I came, we came here from California, so I know exactly what all that...
What they're about.
crap is about.
Yep.
And so, you know, that's a, that's a big concern, and I noticed it. And I'm just a civilian, so. What about the, who's, the guy running the animal shelter is one of yours.
Yeah.
So when, so when do you get him back? Can he be one of these? When do you get him back? Mayor, when does he get him back?
When is he going to come back?
So what we're, we're going through the process right now of hiring a director, and essentially, we are, we are always going to have the shelter now. The shelter's going to be underneath our purview and our oversight. So, and that's in conjunction with how Idaho Falls runs it, how a lot of other communities run that. He's about 50-50 now back, but essentially, we're going to always have to spend some time with the shelter now.
Well, but you're, but not an officer. You're not going to have, we're not going to have an officer running the shelter for the duration.
No, no, no.
Right, and that's what I'm asking. That, the officer, the body, the officer.
Soon.
When are you going to get that spot, that position? When are you going to get that human back?
Soon.
Doing his cop job?
Soon.
Okay, so he's...
They've interviewed, they're interviewing, they have interviewed, they've got it knocked down to a couple of people and...
So are you already counting him coming back and still needing that X, that five?
Yeah, yeah, and when you start looking at it, right, command staff, a lot of times command staff, we're not out on the street shagging calls, we're in here doing this stuff, and the boots on the ground are the ones out doing, you know, that stuff. It's like, kind of like with the U.S. Marshals position. It's not like the U.S. Marshal is over in Boise, he's out, you know, chasing bad guys. Even though we do go out every once in a while, still do that to not forget where we came from, but that, he's factored into the 92 sworn positions that were authorized already.
Okay.
So it would not make a difference. We would still, there still would be that need.
Okay.
Okay, so what we're going to end up doing is we're going to have a discussion next week about this, and I would keep working on it and tell you here otherwise. We're going to have a discussion because obviously there's a budgetary impact here over the next few years, and there's a lot of questions that have been asked, and we've got a lot to consider and think about, and so, but you've got a date of the 24th, that will be after the 20th when we meet. So I would continue to work on it and...
I would, yeah, get it as ready as you can so that when you have your answer...
I wouldn't, I wouldn't wait so you have four days or three days to put it together.
I don't want to wait, sir. You don't have to worry about that.
I would be putting it together and getting it, and if it comes back that, hey, really, truly, we've got too many concerns, then there'll be some other things for us to look at. But right now, that's kind of what I would start to do and...
And with your permission, we'll also let you know when we meet with the Fort Hall Business Council too.
That would be great. If you meet with those before...
Mayor, when that happens, we really would like you to be with us.
Okay.
If we can get you to find some time in just...
Yeah, before the 20th?
If you can, we're hoping next week.
Okay, let's see if we can make that happen before the 20th, because if it can happen before the 20th...
I think it's important that city leadership is there so that we can enhance their level of comfort and...
Absolutely.
Recognize their importance.
I just want to be able to report to the council that that meeting's happening so that they know, because there's some consideration there too.
Thank you, thank you for your consideration. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to Agenda Item 9, Ross Park Aquatic Complex Pool and Building Heaters Proposal. Parks and Recreation Department staff will be in attendance to provide an overview of the current status of a large area of pool heaters and main building water heaters at the Ross Park Aquatic Complex. Staff is recommending the repurposing of available pool resurfacing resources and, or to address the pool heater and main building water heater needs. Council consideration and direction regarding the proposed repairs is being sought. The pool and main building heater needs have quickly risen to a much higher level of priority than resurfacing of the remaining pool areas due to the condition and age. And if you write another one that long to say we want to talk about pool heaters and water heaters...
We found that one down.
He likes to write.
Lots of words.
Yes, yes.
Got his summer cans.
John.
Thank you. Mayor Bladen, council members, John Banks, Parks and Recreation Director, and...
Brett Hewitt, Parks Superintendent.
And Stacy Van Kirk, the Ross Park manager, gives her regrets. The day got a little bit late, and she had a pre-existing appointment with one of her kids, so she gives her regrets. I know you guys have had a long meeting and afternoon here. I'll try and get through this as quick as I can there. I wanted to give you some background on kind of the circumstances that we find ourselves in and, and kind of the chain of events, so. The various Ross Park Aquatics Complex pool heaters and the main building are heated by a series of individual heaters. The four large pools at the complex are heated by industrial-scale pool heaters, one for each pool. And I've included a picture of the type and style of those heaters on page two of your executive summary for this item. That would be the big industrial square-looking heater. The main pool building, which houses the locker room, shower facilities, and administrative areas, is heated by three 100-gallon commercial-grade gas-water heaters via a radiant floor heating system. Excuse me. These would be kind of a large-scale commercial version of the traditional cylinder-style water heaters you might find in your homes, but substantially beefed up for these needs. And that, I've included a picture of these type on page three of your item. Each pool has its own heater and specific size requirements, and the pools are all heated throughout each yearly May through August season to provide for comfortable swimming. Unfortunately, the operational status of the individual area of pool heaters has deteriorated quite rapidly on us over the past few months. The Lazy River Pool Heater developed a major leak towards the end of the 19 season. Staff was able to make a repair on that heater, we were hoping would be a little more long-term, but unfortunately, the repair proved to be pretty temporary. The leaking issues resumed and worsened following the 19 season, and that heater is now no longer working. The main lap pool heater developed some significant internal leaks in various locations during November of 19 and has also become non-operational as of late November. These heaters, we've had the experts out to see, hey, what do we need to do to keep these things running and repaired? But unfortunately, they've been deemed beyond repair due to age and condition. Just as an FYI, the typical life expectancy of these types of industrial pool heaters is approximately 13 to 15 years, and the aquatics complex will be entering its 21st season this summer for 2020. The remaining large area pool is a zero-depth splash pool heater. It is currently working. However, it's been displaying similar, you know, kind of par for the course, internal leak symptoms for some time, as well as coil issues. And kind of a, I guess a frustrating caveat on this one is that this is the one that has been the most problematic over the last couple of years that we've had the most problems with. Wouldn't you know, it's still kicking, but the other two have gone out, so it's kind of what's happening to us. The Activity Pool Heater is also working, but it's also showing signs of its, of its age as well. We're also experiencing some intermittent gas supply issues where it will click on and off and operate, and then you have to go reset it and these types of things. So due to the similar types of issues and age of equipment, obviously, there's a concern about, on staff's part, that the other two heaters are also on the verge of becoming Jumping over to the main pool building heaters, a little bit of background. When the aquatics complex was designed and originally constructed, it was done so with a dual purpose in mind. First was to serve as a swimming complex in the summer months, which it does, and then Phase 2 was to be an ice rink slash skating venue in the winter months, so Phase 2 was never completed. As a result of that design, however, the building was outfitted with a radiant floor heating to keep the floors dry, serve as the heating and winterization source for the building during the winter. The radiant floor heating system is fed by these three large 100-gallon commercial water heaters, and they also provide for the warm water for showering and other needs. One of these main building heaters broke down and was replaced in October of 2016. Towards the end of this past season, we began experiencing some intermittent warm water issues where the showers were going cold and not heating up, so later followed by some leak issues. So that tells us that the other two are reaching the end of their, their lives. These are also kind of 15-year lifespan type of heaters, assuming you maintain them well, and we're also entering our 21st season for these heaters. As far as resources, during the fiscal 19 and 20 budget process, council did approve resources in the amount of $265,000 for resurfacing of the aquatic complex pool areas, with the zero-depth splash pool and the Lazy River Pool being the highest priorities. On January 16th, council accepted the lowest responsive bid in the amount of just over $148,000 for the work and authorized the mayor's execution of the agreement. We have given the contractor notice to proceed, Brad, a couple of weeks ago, and resurfacing work for those two high-priority pools is to begin as of February 18th, so right around the corner here or thereafter, and contractually scheduled to be completed by May 13th in time for the 2020 season. It was staff's intent to solicit bids for the remaining three pool areas following next season and then have that final resurfacing work done in 2021, same type of schedule, February through May. However, the recent and kind of seemingly ever-evolving pool heater issues have... However, the recent and kind of seemingly ever-evolving pool heater issues have caused us to reevaluate these priorities. As the recent systems fail, failures have unfolded, it's become apparent to us that three of the four large-area pool heaters are in need of replacement. And we would also recommend that the fourth large-area pool heater for the Activity Pool be replaced as well or as soon as possible. Just in light of the rapid succession that these failures are all of a sudden happening on us, we attribute it to, I guess, you know, you maintain the heck out of it and it works until it works. But these things are 20 years old and I think that they're, they've become beyond repair and I think they're just done. So we've got every bit of lifespan we can out of them. The fear of not replacing all four would be that we get into our main, you know, busy revenue generating system and then we have a failure, and that's very problematic, so. Regarding the two remaining main building water heaters, so when we replace the first one, the way they've designed it, it's unbelievably tight and hard to get to, and you have to take all three of them out to replace one. So we found that out the hard way the first time in October of 16. So with both of them kind of at that end of lifespan and displaying those symptoms, we, we would propose and recommend for your consideration that we just throw in the towel on those and replace those as well if we're going to have to take them all three out to do it anyway. So because of, well, first, we have obtained cost estimates for replacement of the four large-area pool heaters in the amount of approximately $84,000. And for the remaining two building heaters, for around $25,000. So these would be two separate jobs, two separate sets of expertise. We would probably try and purchase the water heaters. We got a quote from Ferguson, which generated our cost estimate. But we would obviously try and find the lowest price online, do as much work as we can ourselves on the main building pool heaters. Our staff doesn't really have the expertise for the pool heaters, large industrial scale, and then just pay the licensed plumber for the work that we need to. So that's how those estimates were derived. So because of these evolving failures that I've noted, staff is requesting that council consider repurposing the available pool resurfacing resources to address the pool heater and main building water heater needs. They've just kind of quickly risen to a much higher priority level than the last three pool areas. We do have about $117,000. Well, we've got the full 265 now, but after the Phase 1 resurfacing, we'll have about $117,000 left, which is sufficient to cover the estimated $100,000, $8,000, $9,000, $10,000 for the water heaters. We would then look to kind of reshuffle the deck. We've brought forward the heater concerns in past budgets, but, you know, with limited resources and they're still working. So, I mean, we try and keep them working as long as we can. So we're just kind of reshuffling the deck and maybe putting those little lower priority pool resurfacing needs and putting these first with those resources. And then I would come back to you with a separate request for the remaining resurfacing. That's basically it.
That request though would not come until the budgeting season, was it?
Correct. Yeah, either, you know, we're well aware that the pie's only so big and it's a lot of competing resources and, you know, especially in light of the last two presentations, either fiscal '21 or a future budget, wherever would be best for the city.
Questions?
How long do you think you can put off the resurfacing?
I guess as long as, I would think maybe a couple of years at the most. The two pools that we are resurfacing, those are kind of the constant foot traffic variety, whereas the other ones are more of a, kind of a bobbing up and down, swimming, exiting type of activity. So they've got a little bit more life in them. They're not as bad as the other two. But typically, you get about 15 years out of a good resurfacing if you keep your pH levels and everything in check and your maintenance is good. And again, we're at 21 years on these things, so. But we can't, we can't operate pool areas without these heaters. So it's just kind of, it's leapfrogged the resurfacing. But I think we can certainly this season, and if need be, we'll, we'll do what we have to do. But we want to be able to open this season, so that's, that's the reason for the request.
I think since it's already budgeted and this is simply a reallocation of budgeted resources, we have to go with what you think is best for your operation. So my proposal is you bring it back to us and however it's got to be reconfigured and we repurpose that portion of the budget for you. The other issue is a different budget concern. The resurfacing will come up in our budget development.
Yeah, a separate request either this budget season or the following.
And the heaters will all be here in time and installed and...
There is some lead time on those.
...object before the season starts?
Yeah. I wanted to see kind of what the temperature of the council was, if you were okay with trying to replace them all, which I think is the best, they're all the same age, or maybe do what we have to and preserve those reasons.
Doesn't, doesn't make sense to replace one of those heaters and then have to take out two.
Well, I mean, I mean the large-area pool heaters.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, just move ahead, get it all done, and hope we get another 20 years of life out of it.
That's right. So work with legal and find out what we need to do to bring this back in front of us and as soon as we can, let's get it.
Yeah. We're, we were looking at the Idaho Code for, as this has evolved, we would be using the Idaho Code for semi-formal bidding and procurement of goods and services. And we're within those parameters and follow those guidelines.
Perfect. I think that's a good thing, good idea to just work with legal, get it, and that's, bring it, bring it in front of us for a council meeting and we'll get it done.
Awesome.
Or we'll at least have the, well, "get it done" is wrong terminology. We'll, we'll vote on it.
Get it done. Get it done.
That's right.
Get it done.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
You know, and I want to say once again, thank you for the clarity and the internal logic in your presentations. Because it, I think it really helps us get quickly...
Yes.
...to kind of an idea of what we want to do. And I really appreciate that because it cuts down on the amount of questions we have to ask.
Maybe we should spread the word that I'm not as smart as I look and people really can Barney this down so that I don't have to ask a lot of questions.
Did you say Barney?
Barney. You know, like Barney Rubble.
Yeah, Barney Rubble, yeah.
Anyway, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Yeah, John, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for joining us today. With that, we are, well, before that, I'd like to thank the council. This has been a long day. Thank you for being here and for working through this agenda the way we have. And with that, we are adjourned.